Call to order, I'd like to call the city, the Malden City Council's order. Time is 7:02. Uh, council banging out of a gavel, it's a virtual gavel. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Which just ends one nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. Limitation, justice for all. And please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, uh, servicemen and women, and for those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. I would also like to add, I would like to, uh, stay, stay standing for a moment of silence for the three firefighters that unfortunately passed away in Baltimore. Uh, terrific, horrific news, and then we had two police officers, um, in New York City over the week. Thank you. Clerk will call the roll.
Blown Hayes.
Here.
Schrannen.
Schrannen here.
Bro.
Here.
Linehan.
Linehan here.
McDonald.
McDonald here.
Murphy.
Murphy.
Thanks, Drew.
Murphy.
Murphy here.
Thank you. I did, thank you. O'Malley.
Uh, here.
Sika.
Sika here.
Minelli.
Yep.
Winslow.
Winslow here.
Betaphor.
Betaphor here. Out of the permit, provision of the open meeting law, for those in attendance, please be informed that UMA, uh, Urban Media Arts will be recording this evening's meeting, so just be aware. Uh, there will also be audio and video recordings of this meeting first. Uh, I don't believe there's anybody else who's asked us about any of the recordings, is that correct, clerk?
Uh, I did not receive anything, though.
Alright, uh, so it was right. Um, so before we go into, uh, we have two guests, and I think everybody, uh, knows our guest well, and, um, certainly are excited to hear from them. I do still want to know, I was speaking to the clerk, uh, before this, and I believe when I was logging in, uh, the clerk, uh, did give us the numbers for the vote for the vocational high school in Malden. Uh, in Malden, and if I'm wrong, clerk Lucy, please correct me, I believe it's 665 for the new volk and 151 against the new volk.
Just off by one, it was 666.
Oh, 666, I'm sorry. Six, that's bad, that's bad luck. 666 to 151, so it sounds, well, it doesn't sound like it is, uh, a pretty, uh, big majority there for the city of Malden. Low turnout, which was expected, uh, I was in the clerk's office yesterday, uh, predicted low turnout, but certainly, uh, very lopsided, and I believe, uh, Attorney Fallon was mentioning maybe some of the other cities are coming in with the results, so it's probably gonna, uh, pass and we'll take that up, uh, in future meetings, but just wanted to share that with the councils as well as, uh, the residents of Malden. Any questions? Okay, thank you. So the, uh, first, the first speaker we have, um, is Malden Reads, which, uh, very excited to have, uh, present this year's, uh, book. And, uh, on, on speaking on behalf of Malden Reads will be Anne Marie Dursa, Anne Dursa Rose, as well as Felicia Ryan. Um, they will be presenting this year's book. I don't want to know the na- I don't want to announce the name of it, I do happen to have a copy, I was in the council office the other day, and I do know that we, we do have copies of the book, uh, I have mine with me, uh, so, uh, I'll be, I'll let them, um, announce this year's book, and pretty excited about it. I've been reading them every year since they've been announced, and last year's book was my favorite, to be fair, the Trevor Noah one, uh, so I'm excited about opening this one and reading this one. Uh, I know Council Linehan, I spoke to them, so Council Linehan, do you have anything, uh, you want to add before we turn them over to, um, Anne, 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 Anne Dursa Rose and Felicia?
Uh, not really, just to welcome them, I was pleased to sponsor them, I know for many years, Councilor Di Maria, um, had the honor of sponsoring them to come before us, and really glad to hear what they have to say and excited to learn more about the book. I also haven't, uh, read it yet, but I'm excited to have a copy and hear about what they have planned.
Great. So on that, on Council Linehan's squadship to have, uh, Malden Reads with, uh, Anne Dursa Rose and Felicia Ryan, please, uh, do I have to, Greg, do I have to make them?
No, they're, they're on, they're, they're already, uh, they're good to go. You have to make them up. Yeah, can you make them a, a panelist?
I'm doing it right now. Uh, give me one second, I see Felicia. I'm gonna change role to panelist, and Anne Marie.
Anne, Anne, Anne Dursa. I see a couple, uh, Urban Media.
Yeah, I know, um, do, do we know if she's under, um, if Anne is under Urban Media Arts? I don't see her name listed here, so. Council Linehan, do you happen to have her cell phone number, which one?
Um, yeah, I was just checking my email.
The question and answer says that yes, Urban Media.
Yeah, Urban Media Arts, yeah.
Alright, I will do that, I'm sorry, I, I'm using a small iPad, my, my computer is not working well. Uh, here we go. Change the panels, okay. Thank you, counselor. Alright. Anne, Felicia, you should be live. Can you hear us, can you see us?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, sorry about the little technical difficulties there.
That's okay.
It doesn't, oh, here it is.
See coming in?
I made her panelist, I confirmed it.
I need my partner in crime.
Yep.
Um, uh, before we begin, are we able to share, did you give us capability to share, like?
Yep, yes, absolutely, you have full, you, you are a panelist, so you can, you can share the screen.
We can drive the bus.
You can drive the bus.
Okay, well, I'm pleased to be here, thank you so much for this opportunity, this is my first time presenting. I am a new steering committee member for Malden Reads, I've been a Malden resident for about five years now, so I'm probably a newbie, some of you may be familiar with me, I'm a member of the Malden Writers Collaborative, I'm a local poet, um, I record a port podcast called Hi Felicia at Urban Media Arts, and I've been a former board member there as well. Um, and then Anne is my partner in crime this evening, she's gonna tell you about Malden Reads, and then we'll get into the presentation. Do you have the ability to share your screen, Anne?
Well, before I do, I just want to say hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight, um, most of you know me, I'm Anne Dursa Rose, I'm the Associate Director at UMA Urban Media Arts, and I'm also the co-facilitator along with Jody Zalk, who couldn't be here this evening, um, for the Malden Reads One City One Book Program. And, uh, we are gonna, Felicia and I are gonna tag team tonight's presentation, so I'm going to, um, just start by sharing my screen and make sure that you can all see it, let me just put it in.
We can see it, you might want to change the view. There you go.
Yeah. So yeah, folks can change their, how, how they see the people on the side or the bottom, however, like to do it. Okay, so, um, for those of you who don't know or anybody watching tonight, Malden Reads is a community reading program that, um, seeks to answer the question, what if all of Malden reads the same book? We are a program that is organized by a dynamic group of volunteers in collaboration with the Malden Public Library and UMA Urban Media Arts, formerly MATV. And this is our 12th year of Malden Reads, 2022 is our 12th year, and we are very excited, um, for the first time, our book selection is a book of poetry. So this is something we have never done before, we've never chosen a book of poetry. Um, the, the book is called An American Sunrise, and the poet, the author, is Joy Harjo, she's the nation's poet laureate, and she's an indigenous Native American woman. And in the spirit of that, we are going to start the presentation, I'm going to hand it over to, to do a land acknowledgement and to talk a little bit about what a land acknowledgement is.
So, um, I am relatively new to what a land acknowledgement is, so I may be in a similar vote to, um, some folks here. A land acknowledgement, um, is a formal statement that recognizes and respects indigenous people and the, as the traditional stewards of the land, and their enduring relationship that exists and their traditional territories. Um, I think the first time I heard one was at the Malden Cultural Council's deliberations, and at first I think I felt a bit of confusion, perhaps some discomfort, and then settled into a curiosity about why we would do such a thing. Um, I expect you might have a range of reactions to this, and, um, this is our acknowledgement. As a Malden-based cultural and educational organization, it's important for us to bring our history to light. Before this land was called Malden, it was an indigenous community where the Native American Pentecouc tribe called Mystic Side their home. The name Mystic is a familiar word to us, it's often mistaken as an English word, although the original Mystic was an indigenous word, Mystic or Mistuck, an Algonquin word for the great tidal river that separates Malden and Chelsea from Charlestown. It's powerful to reclaim the original meaning of the word and to share the true history, and so we want to acknowledge that we are on their land. It is central to Malden Read, Malden Reads' mission to connect with people through telling stories and sharing together. As we honor and acknowledge the people who came before us, we want to share a specific story to honor our legacy and find personal connection. And as we honor the people who came before us, the people of the Mystic Side who lived here and the Pentecouc tribe in particular, we want to raise up the story of the women who allowed European settlers to be here, whether we refer to them as settlers, colonizers, or invaders. Her name is forgotten or was not divulged to the English, so she was referred to as Squaw Satchum. She was the widow of, uh, Nampa, Nampa Setmet, who led the indigenous people in this area before her. It's important to face the fact that while said that people who look like us are allowed to live here, it did not give our forbearers the right to erase, conquer, murder, pillage, displace, or commit any sins that they committed. And paying honor to Squaw Satchum, we honor the unnamed women, men, children, and Pentecouc tribe who lived on the land before the settlers around 1630. Today, Malden continues to be one of the most diverse communities, rich in history, as Malden Reads at its core is bringing our community together. We strive to be inclusive by lifting every voice in our community and expand our own definitions of culture. And I just wanted to thank, um, Mark Linehan from the Malden Cultural Council for generously sharing his crafting of this message, and we have adapted our land acknowledgement from his text. So, American Sunrise, poems by Joy Harjo. I personally am very excited about this, um, she is a three-term poet laureate, I believe she's only the second in the history of poet laureates for the United States. Um, she's a member of, sorry, it's gonna move our, our, our people heads, member of the Muscovy Nation and belongs to the Osveke people Hickory Grounds, she's the author of nine books of poetry. She's actually a musician and a visual artist, and she has seven award-winning albums, and currently she's the chancellor of the American Academy of Poets. Um, part of the reason that this, that's okay, part of the reason that this collection is important is because it explores themes that have to do with human rights, socio-political equity across American cultures and communities, and the various indigenous peoples and the importance of their land and environment. As we step through the portal of the before times, we can see this collection as a springboard for ideas and conversations that will help us heal and move forward as a community. Now you can advance that slide. These are some of the companion books, and they range in terms of reading levels from pre-K to eighth grade, and they echo the themes of the main book selection. So, why poetry, and what is poetry? Um, I think sometimes people have a very, uh, staunch or static idea of what poetry is. Um, a lot of people might be familiar with the Robert Frost poem, "The woods are lovely, dark and deep, but I have promises to keep and miles to go before I sleep, and miles to go before I sleep." But poetry can be rap lyrics, poetry can be songs, poetry can be a painting or a hymn, odes, storytelling, all cultural traditions and historical, um, traditions have, around the world have some form of poetry, the Vikings had sagas, the Greeks had odes, Christianity has psalms, and poetry's been used by all peoples for tribute and storytelling. Um, poetry is meant to be heard, absorbed, and reflected on, and we're thrilled for the opportunity to do so, and we look towards our partners in city government, our business community, our cultural and civic organizations, to help lifting every voice of Malden, past, present, and future. Next slide. So we have a video, we're gonna try and play it, if it doesn't play, we're gonna advance our presentation. It's real quick, it's maybe two minutes.
So you grew up during the 50s and 60s, not really a time when women, and certainly not a time when Native Americans had role models in poetry as a life path. I read you said this about your calling, that it was the spirit of poetry who reached out and found me as I stood there at the doorway between panic and love. When did you know that poetry was your way in?
That was a shock, just like being named the US poet laureate, because I was into painting and art like my grandmother, my Aunt Lois Harjo, and, and the idea of speaking in public or even writing my voice down was horrifying, my stepfather stole my journal and started reading passages out, and I decided I would never write, I would not write anything down. But I was a student at the University of New Mexico, we were involved in Native rights movements and human rights, and there was women rights, and, and at the same time, I was starting to, I realized later I was having a breakdown, but I did not have the luxury of having a breakdown because I had two young children, and there would have been no one, I had been banished from my home for speaking the truth, so I had to walk through it. And it was around that time I was listening to, there were all of these multicultural poetry gatherings, and I was listening to poetry of native, and it was the first time I heard native poets, and I thought, wow, we can write about our lives, and they can be in poetry, and I loved poetry before that, but it switched to something that was something I admired from a distance to something that was something that I could participate in.
Thanks, Anne.
So you grew up during the 50s and 60s, not really a time when women.
We got a pause, yeah, there you go. So these are just some quotes from Joy Harjo, which I thought were really relevant, which is, the first one I really love is, "Don't worry about what a poem means. Do you ask what a song means before you just listen?" And, um, I think honoring the connection that she has to the natural world. Um, remember that the plants, trees, animals, animal life, who all have their families, their histories to talk to them, listen to them, they are alive poems. So poetry can also be fun. Throughout our, um, season, and we started this with our launch in December, Elena Martinez, who is very talented, created, um, magnetic poetry sets. So we had larger sets that kids were able to manipulate words and images to create poetry, and then they actually sell these lovely sets at Galler 57, and, uh, you can throw them up on your refrigerator and perhaps talk to your wayward teenager through poetry, or write questions to each other, or just fool around, which I, my, my family actually is, is fooling around, so I'll go to the refrigerator and see strange messages, and I'll realize somebody has been making poetry. And then I am gonna turn this part over to Anne Dursa Rose, she's gonna talk about some of our selected events and programming coming up.
Thanks, Felicia, we're excited about this year's, um, series of events and, uh, offerings, so I'm gonna highlight some of them. Um, we have coming up on March 10th, a collaboration with the Malden Writers Collaborative. They will offer a workshop discussion that aims to deepen one's understanding and appreciation of poetry using excerpted poems from Joy Harjo's book. And if you're someone like me, that sometimes, uh, reads poetry and be like, huh? I don't get that. Um, this is a great workshop for you, and, and anywhere you are along the spectrum, whether you love poetry, read it all the time, or sometimes you just don't get it, don't understand it, and it just, it's, it just aims to, you know, give us, give us a deeper appreciation, so we're excited about that, and that will be held via Zoom. We also are gonna be offering a writing workshop with local artist C.D. Collins, who's a poet, author, and storyteller, she's worked with Malden Reads many times in the past. And, uh, you don't need to be a poet to take this class, you do need to want to write, um, and through in-class exercises, she will pose questions like, what are you struggling with right now? What are the challenges? What is a portal of joy to you, a source of strength? And, um, everyone will, uh, write one finished poem, and like Joy Harjo's poetry, this workshop will explore themes of identity, courage, family history, personal challenges, and hope. And we will do a final presentation for the community, hopefully in person, um, and we can also do it by Zoom or both, so we have to kind of see how the COVID thing plays out, um, but we'll be excited to share writings, uh, poetry writing from the community with the rest of the community. As always, we partner with organizations, um, anyone, any organization or group or business can engage with our themes, and First Parish is a great example. Every year, they've held an interfaith worship service based around the themes of the book, open to the whole community, it doesn't matter what your religious background or non-religious background may be, but through music and through readings and through a sermon, um, the, uh, minister dives into the themes of the book and pulls out the wisdom and, and things that we can apply to our daily life. We will have film screenings, um, and discussion, uh, variety of films offered around themes of the book. Oh, there's one that's missing, I, I don't know where that slide disappeared, but of course, book discussions, there was a book discussion with the mayor, and the slide has disappeared, so I do just want to mention that, that we'll have regular book discussions, um, that are open to anyone to just come and talk about the poems in the book and, and poetry as a whole. This here is, uh, gonna be our capstone event, it's gonna be held in May, and we are partnering with the Friends of the Malden River and Malden River Works, uh, to offer, an event where people can go out on canoes and commune with nature, and then we'll also have poetry readings and poetry-related activities, so we could be outside and really just kind of live the themes out of this year's book. Uh, we are going to be reprising our stargazing event, which started in 2015 when we, um, did The Martian, the book The Martian, and it proved to be very popular. We partner with, uh, Ward Five, and Ryan O'Malley is the city councillor, and, um, he always organizes a cleanup of weights mount right beforehand, um, and we are gonna, uh, we have telescopes there from local, uh, amateur astronomer clubs, and you get to look through the telescopes, and they guide you through the night sky, and of course, um, we usually have storytelling, but this year, of course, poetry, so it's called Ode to the Stars, and it's planned for August 2022. We always have programs to, for youth, a variety of programs, we supply hundreds of books to the schools every year, and we supply curriculum and resources, and then whole programs as well after school, um, in various settings. Um, on the upper right-hand corner, that's a Skype event with a local, I mean, an author from one of our companion books from a previous year. Um, below is high school students engaging with the book, so that's a regular part of our program, and then this year, very special, we have started to put in place, um, partnering with the city of Malden, the Malden Public Schools, and the National Youth Poet Laureate Program called Urban Word, is a, uh, plans to select a youth poet laureate for the city of Malden. We're not sure of the timeline yet, um, but we will be going through the process, and, um, we're very excited to be able to choose, um, someone from our community as the youth poet laureate, who will then have a chance to have a mentor, an adult poet mentor, uh, and that is a young Amanda Gordon in the lower right-hand corner. And then we are gonna just, uh, start a spring, in the initiative in the spring for just engaging people to just share poetry out on the street. Chalk, um, tack to trees, stumble upon, take a picture, share it on social media, people can see it on social media, because they can stumble across it outside, so we just really hope for people to just engage with the idea of poetry, whether you write your own, or whether you quote poetry that you love, or is, is, has a special meaning to you. So that is a sampling, you can find out more on our website, we're still populating the website with events, so just be a little patient with us on that, but the best thing to do, if you want to know about what's going on with Malden Reads, is to, um, follow us on social media and sign up for our newsletter, um, and then there's also obviously information on the website, for all kinds of events and activities. And then, we definitely want to thank, uh, this program cannot run without funding and support, and, um, we want to thank for, since the beginning, the first year, the Adelaide Breed Baird Foundation has provided support, the Malden Industrial Aid Society, the city of Malden through the Community Development Block Grant, the Malden Cultural Council, and every year we have local businesses and organizations that give funding support, as well as in-kind support and resources, and local residents, and we do urge you, I know many of you, uh, city councillors have already donated, but if you haven't, you would, and you would like to, um, we welcome donations, uh, and it allows us to, to, to run the programs that we do. And of course, our two lead collaborators for the program, Malden Public Library and Urban Media Arts, provide all kinds of resources and support for this program. The complete list is on our website. So thank you, and finally, our presentation would not be complete without ending with a poem, so I'm gonna hand it over to Felicia.
Um, so this is from American Sunrise by Joy Harjo, it's on page 25, actually. It's called Seven Generations. Children play with full bellies at the edge of the mating dance. Beneath the sky, throw open, thrown open to the needs of stars, to know themselves against the dark. All night we dance the weave of joy and tears. All night we're lit with the sunrise of forever, just ahead of us, through the trees, one gen- generation after the other. So thank you again, it was really a pleasure to be able to do this, it's my first show here, so I hope, um, I kept you all awake and engaged.
Thank you for allowing us to present.
Does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Murphy has her hand up, Counsel Murphy, I see yours first, so go ahead, Counsel Murphy. You're on mute, Counsel Murphy, and then Council Linehan, then Counselor Hayes, I'm going in order, so. I can hear you, Counsel, yes.
Yeah, me now, okay. Um, well, first of all, Felicia, it's a pleasure to meet you, welcome to your first meeting out at the city council, and Anne, um, I don't know what to say, I mean, we've been doing this for 12 years, and each year, um, Malden Reads raises the game, it raises the bar. It is absolutely amazing to see a program last this long, and over the time period, just embrace more and more of, of our community, of the issues we face on a daily basis, and the ability to bring in everybody to a circle where we can all talk about the same topic. It is absolutely, um, a fabulous thing that you and Jody and the entire Malden Reads team has done over these past years. Um, this year looks just absolutely amazing, exciting, and it's bringing, I, you know, a new depth and a new area for all of us to actually focus on. So thank you once again for all you do and for, um, just the commitment that you have to Malden Reads, um, in One City One Book, it, it truly is an amazing undertaking, and you folks deserve a tremendous, um, vote of thanks and gratitude, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy, going down the line, Counsel Anne DeLinehan.
Thank you, Council President, um, thank you both so much for the amazing presentation. I was also just gonna mention Jody as well, like Counselor Murphy did, I know she couldn't be here tonight, um, but, you know, has been a huge part of this, and we've partnered on a few events, as I know so many of my colleagues have. I welcome the challenge to learn more about poetry, I'll admit, it's not, um, my first go-to for what I go to read. but actually was really inspired by the presentation. I may show up at that writer's workshop. I thought that sounded cool. The one other thing I wanted to share is that as I was looking through the book and looking through the youth companion books with my daughter, who's eight and is in third grade at BB, she mentioned to me that they're already reading through, I guess, some of the selections for the kids. So that was awesome to hear that they're baking that into the curriculum. And then that brought me to my last point, which is just to ask the question, do we need donations for more books for the public schools? I know last year during our presentation, Jody had mentioned that there was an effort to try to bump up the quantity that we give to the schools each year. Didn't know if that was still true. I know it's challenging times, you know, we've coming off a year of hybrid learning and you know, may not be easy to get the kids all the books, but is that a need? And if so, how can folks that are watching help?
Good points, Councillor.
Yeah, I mean, we try to know budget, you know, every year, we kind of have a sense of our budget. And then we we give the books out accordingly. And last year, we did go over and above and we kind of stretched ourselves. Luckily, we were able to make up the difference. But I think that, I think, you know, we definitely could use funding. But we are definitely managing with what we have. And I think the schools are always very appreciative for what we're able to give.
Good answer, Ian. Good answer. You need more. You need more. Councillor, Councillor Karen Cohen Hayes.
So good evening and thank you, Anne and Felicia. That was fantastic, as always. And it's a pleasure for me. I've never been able to thank you publicly. So this is great, a little opportunity here. I've worked and partnered with Malden Reads since day one. And so it's been, you know, a joy with everything. We've always, you know, helped out on some collaborations. So please reach out again. I'm sure I'll be there. I also wanted to let you know that was on the Friends of the Malden River meeting last night. They were already promoting it, the collaboration between the two of you on the river. Very excited about that. And I did have a question because I'm super excited about the poetry part and wondering if that includes all ages. So is that something that teens can join in?
Awesome. For that particular event or?
Yes, the writing club. Well, there was workshops.
Oh, the workshop, yes, for teens. Yes, we would accept teens for that.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you so much. Can't wait to partner up.
Okay, let me just make sure there's no, Councillor Crowe, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to skip the Councillor. You did have your hand up. Councillor Crowe.
That's all right. That's right. Thank you so much. Again, like everyone says, a great presentation and it's really very exciting. They kind of taken it in a little different direction and, you know, poetry, I think, especially right now. It really is an avenue for youth, even younger youth, you know, to kind of express themselves as Joy had said in her little interview with with Oberon Free that she stood like right. And I think it really is going to be a catalyst to get kids to kind of engage in poetry, but then be able to express themselves with everything that's going on. So I think it's very exciting that, you know, it's kind of taken into a new and unknown element. But with Felicia, you know, as your cohort and arms there, I'm sure we're in great, we're in great hands. So I am looking forward to all the things that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor O'Malley, you have your hand up. Councillor Linnahan, do you have your hand up again? I just want to make sure.
I do. I just wanted to remind folks, we were going to do the book selfie. I promised Jody and Anne that I wouldn't forget to have us do that at the end. That's all I was going to say.
No problem. Councillor O'Malley. I just want to make sure. I'm trying to track it here. Councillor O'Malley, you have the book.
I just want to say thank you to Malden Reads. It's one of the most well-run organizations in the city. And they always do amazing things for our community. You know, not everyone has the ability to 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 leave the city all the time and bringing different events to our community is really a need that they do fail. And, you know, I do look forward to the stargazing event at Waits Mount. And I can't wait to dive more into the book. I've already read a few poems so far and it's been pretty inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Karen.
Of course, just echoing appreciation and excitement for this year's Malden Reads. I had a question just about the types of events and partners you got scheduled. So so much of the work of of Joy Harjo is about her experience as an indigenous person. And I was just curious if there are specific indigenous partners for the for the program this year? Or I just didn't see as much about that in your presentation. So I was curious to learn more.
Yeah. Well, thank you for bringing that up. We do, we did have a meeting with Chief Daniel Strong Walker, who, Urga Perret, who had connected us with. And he is sort of serving as like an advisor consultant. And we have, we haven't quite figured out like what type of program he may be involved in. But we had this, he's, he's there for our program. We had a great meeting with him and he's very excited about what we're doing. And so he's someone who's very active in the native community. And so we are definitely reaching out. We're reaching out to the Wampanoag tribe. And we we did do had a native author their third year with Sherman Alexie. So we had contacts from there. So we are definitely integrating Native American community into our programming, for sure.
Councillor McDonald, do you have anything else? Thank you. Okay, before I, we go to the next speaker, a couple of things that I want to say, you know, it's amazing to this organization, Malden Reads, certainly, I think. Everybody said great accolades, you know, the duration of keeping any organization together. Certainly, the last couple of years has been a challenge, but every year you continue, you know, inspire and increase participation of the community. Like Councillor Linnahan said, poetry is probably not my strong suit and certainly not the first book I would pick off the shelf. But I'm trying to keep my record streak and I'm going to certainly take a stab at reading this. And the really thing that amazes me, though, is how every year Malden Reads happens to find a book that brings all backgrounds and ethnicities and gender to one community. It helps us generate not only just understanding of the world we live in, but certainly general discussion. So this one will be one I will, I will certainly stop to read. And I did open it up because I know it had the nice ribbon on there. So thank you for that. But getting back to fundraising, we got to keep on hammering, man. There's a Bruins raffle in here. So I want to make sure that we know that there's a Bruins raffle. And you can donate $10 for your chance to win two tickets to the Bruins versus LA on March 7th, as well as a $25 gift card for the Banner's Kitchen and Tap in the Garden. And that you can, you can donate on via Venmo. You have to include the word Bruins in that, in your name and email and phone number. And I'm assuming and this barcode, but you can also find this on on the website, Malden Reads Ottawa, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I will ask them, I have no problem asking for people to send in some money. So great organization, always could look for additional funding. And we look forward to reading this book and the discussions throughout the year. So I appreciate it. Before we go. I'm sorry. Yep.
Sorry, I was a little late. But no, I really want to thank Malden Reads for all the great work they've done over the years. And it's, I think it's refreshing to have poetry. You know, there's a lot of different styles of reading. I'm reading some short stories myself. It can be a lot to read a whole book. So the nice thing about poetry is you can sort of do a short taste. It's kind of like the topus of reading or whatever. So you can enjoy a little bit and enjoy it deeply and then go on. So I think that's a nice opportunity. So it's nice to, the imagination, the change. And I think it's a very interesting topic. So thank you. Once again, looking forward to participate and however we can. Thanks, great.
Hey, Councillor. Councillor O'Malley, do you have your hand up again? I'm sorry. I just didn't.
I do. Sorry, I meant to mention this, but I forgot. Yeah, I actually really appreciate the land acknowledgement that that was done. I think it was probably one of the most enlightening and really well thought out to kind of explain, you know, indigenous people who lived in Malden previous to colonialization. You know, you had mentioned Nana Paschamet. And it just got me thinking when I went to the Salem Wood and they used to hang up at High Rock. There's actually Nana Paschamet Ave, which is right up near High Rock. And I was wondering maybe, and obviously not to put more work on on Malden Reads, but if there's anyone in the community who knows, you know, native history that, you know, maybe is really unique to your neighborhood of Malden, if you could share it with us, the council on Malden Reads. It would be really great to kind of honor that that history that, you know, might just be locally known. So that just kind of got me inspired. Thank you.
Right.
Sounds great. I don't see any other hands up. So if there's no other hands, thank you, Ian. Oh, we got to do the photo. I'm sorry. Councillor Linnahan told you to do the photo. I apologize. But I do want to thank Ian and Felicia for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
All right, Councillor, you got to put your book up. This is the participation part of the meeting right here. Let's count somebody. Everybody get a book. There we go. There we go. Everybody get a book. All right, Councillor Linnahan, you tell us when to go. Oh, you don't, what?
Okay, I'll do a screenshot in three, two, one, three, two, one. Got it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again, Ian. Thanks, Felicia. All right. Next order of business. We have another presenter coming before us. Just want to make sure I have her on before I do a quick introduction. Give me one second, everybody. Bibios. This is Bibios. Greg, is Bibios?
Is a pianist.
She's already on?
She is, yeah.
Bibios, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure before I say you're perfect. So I want to, this was based on last year's discussion. Hard to believe it was, it was 2022, but this was based on the resolve that was passed, I believe in December. And that resolve was the city council attend diversity, equity, and inclusion training in 2022 and establish a code of ethics and accountability system for all elected officials. I had the pleasure of speaking with Bibios this morning. She took our marching orders to heart and even though she was already working on, I would say, you know, multiple facets of this training throughout the city, from the Malden Police to the schools, to certainly City Hall and HR. She did take on this additional workload and has, I believe, six bids still, Bibios? Six bids? We discussed this one. So there are six bids that Bibios will present to the city council. After speaking to Bibios, we, and I, I hope this is the field of council, we would like to get to some answer or resolve pretty quickly in terms of choosing, or at least narrowing down from the six to two, and then allow Bibios to do some further negotiation, both in terms of training, dates. Some are very flexible, some are, some asked this, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, Bibios, but some have said are all virtual, some are a combination. But all of them will work with us to accomplish our goals. So my hope is that we allow Bibios to get down to two, based on her recommendations. And then she will go back to the both organizations or companies and ask them to first probably sharpen their pencil. She did say that we might have the ability to save some money and that's always good. And then start working on a calendar to allow the council to come together in formats, either virtual in 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 session or a combination of that. So that is the hope of this presentation. I also shared with Bibios that, and I've told this before, you know, this is not something that's a one and done. This is just really building and we hope to continue going forward. So hopefully we can look at the HR budget for the mayor and maybe add some of this funding in there to make this an ongoing training for the entire city of Malden. So with no further ado, I'd like to introduce Bibios Rochelle. She was the Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Coordinator for the city of Malden. And if I goofed on your title, Bibios, I apologize.
Thank you for the introduction.
Absolutely.
Hello, city council. So I was able to meet with Councillor Spatafor or President Spatafor earlier today. We had six bids. We actually had a couple of bids coming a little bit later, so I can review them. But as of right now, I have narrowed it down to two consulting firms. I had reached out to them and scheduled meetings for this Friday, so we can kind of discuss the negotiation process when it comes to funding. I am, I will be respectful because this is valuable work. I don't think we really can put a price tag on it, but we definitely need to be in a certain budget and I'm aware of that. They are willing to start as early as February, depending on everyone's schedules. We are trying to look for a hybrid model. I do understand that some people need flexibility when it comes to in-person and virtual. They are willing to offer evening hours and even Saturday hours, just in case that's helpful for anybody on the city council. And so I'm hoping to finalize all of this and maybe around the second or third week of February, we can begin the trainings. Again, it'll be a four-part training for three hours each, obviously with breaks. And this will hopefully be something that we do annually.
Hey, Bibios, this, Councillor O'Malley, is your hand up from previous or are you just, you early for this question?
No, I was just going to make the motion that you suggested that we empower Bibios to select the vendor for the training.
Okay, I appreciate that. Second, is there any discussion in the motion? I didn't know if I didn't want to stymie the discussion. So, okay, you, Councillor O'Malley, you have, you put the motion and so you have the, no problem with discussion of the motion? Okay. And then I know Councillor Linnahan did second. So one second, clerk, keep me honest on that motion. So Councillor Karen McDonald.
First, just welcome Bibios and thank you so much for the work that you've already done on this. And I know that we'll end up with a great, a great vendor because there's so many people doing incredible work in in the greater Boston area. So I'm, I'm just curious, like, I'd like to see the biz, but we don't have to do that in this meeting. But I'd like to know who responded. And I, and I just wanted to ask, I don't know if this is a question for you or really a question for the council, but how we address the the different price tags that those various proposals have come in at? Like, I don't, I'm not aware whether we have set a budget overall or whether there's variation or how that factors into your decision. So maybe Council's President Spatafor, you have a better sense about that. But I'm just curious, what's the, what's the boundaries that we're operating with?
Yeah, yeah, it's a great question. I had that discussion with Bibios. There is, there is a small line item in our budget, certainly not enough to cover the training here. But I think with with the certain need for this in the city of Malden, I think we can find the funding and I work with the mayor. What Bibios is trying to do, some of the, some of the bidders have done work with previous departments or organizations with the city. And what we're hoping to do is go to them and say, the city council would like to do it. Can you sharpen your pencil? And we don't expect a big savings, but at least try to use our scale. And then I think coming back with the two bids, once we kind of have an idea, they run from 25,000 to, you know, to 22, when there's some that like 2,000 bucks, which I don't, it gets me nervous when you see such a disparity in terms of training there. So I think once we get, once I get a number from Bibios, because we, we're going to do, right? It's not a question at this point of money. It's just where are we going to find it? Once we get that funding, if it's between 25 and, you know, 20, I'll work with the mayor's office and the city controller to find out in the treasurer and the finance team to find out where we can get this funding and then report that back to the council. But I had the same questions. We don't have a line item in this year's budget. That's why I mentioned, this is probably something that has to go in HR's budget next year. Every organization I ever worked for, this is where it comes from, but we don't have it this year. So we'll make it work, Councillor McDonald. And I think Bibios will be happy to share those numbers, those bids with you. But the hope again is just, we wanted to narrow that field to so allow her and empower Bibios to at least get closer. And when we get to the two bids, I'll certainly let the council know what direction we're going in. Or depending on how much time, you know, before we can do it, have a meeting and let everybody know and then we can move forward.
Sounds good. Thank you. That answers my question.
You're welcome. Councillor Murphy, Finance Chair. She's going to probably slap my hand, but go ahead, Councillor.
No, I'm not. Thank you, Councillor President. And thank you, Bibios, for all the work that you've done today on this. I guess I just wanted to kind of maybe slow this down a little bit, not slow down the process, but slow down the discussion tonight to just kind of delve into a little bit more of the facts. So make sure we all heard the same thing. So Bibios, are you saying that to date you've received six bids?
Correct, six bids. And I can share that with every councillor tomorrow. I can scan it all in.
Okay. Was there, obviously, there was a request, an RFP that went out that had specific, you know, requests for the proposal associated with it. Could you share that with us also, please?
So the process was a little different because it's considered a specialist category. So I was able to just reach out to many different firms and I got some responses from, you know, Councillor McDonald, Councillor Linnahan, and was able to connect with some previous firms that have worked with the school committee. So I would work with them, kind of give them a baseline of what we're looking for. They would offer proposals and their budgets. So a lot of them vary in different services. And I made sure that they identified all the different services because some services will not be specifically for city council, but but will all. specifically for City Council, but, but will also work well for the Racial Equity Commission. So, um, that's why it was important to get a full scope and a full picture of all the services that they offered.
Okay, so we, so are you saying, are you telling me that we, okay, just, not that that's bad, but I'm just saying, so we did not put out a traditional request for a proposal to different venues, we basically just went to a number of venues and said, what do you offer? Is that?
Correct, just be, just because we had the, um, also the Racial Equity Commission, which was a part of the, uh, resolution, so I wanted to make sure that we were getting services, if possible, from one agency for both ends. Um, we did not do a specific bid procurement, but they were aware of what the training should entail. Um, kind of having a little bit of an understanding of what the services are requested, and what is needed for a City Council.
Okay, so, so that is, I guess, what I'm looking at, so you actually have a, a kind of written document or something that identifies or outlines what the services are that we as a city are looking for, that you, could you share?
It was a verbal conversation, but, um, I can absolutely go back to everyone and give them a written document, but it was a verbal conversation.
No, 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 you don't have to go back to everyone and give them a, a written documentation, I guess, just as a City Councilor, I'm just curious as to what the parameters of, you know, what we're looking for are. So, you know, if you could, you know, give us a document that would identify, you know, what it is that you are seeking um, in, you know, these vendors, I think that would be very helpful to us, to understand it, how they meet those needs. So, you know, if you didn't do a formal request for a proposal, that's fine, you know, an RFP, but, um, I think, you know, we do need kind of a, just kind of as a little litmus test, you know, a list of, you know, what it is y'all looking for, um, to benefit all of us, and how these companies ultimately, you know, meet that need, because when it comes down to the decision of the final two, you know, we want to actually understand how that's all gonna work, and, you know, what we're, what we're actually approving.
Okay, absolutely, I can work on that tomorrow.
Okay, that would be awesome, thank you very much.
You also, Counsel Murphy?
I am, thank you, Counsel President.
You're welcome, you're thank, they're welcome, uh, Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes.
Uh, uh, thank you, um, actually, Counselor Murphy asked a lot of the questions that I was going to ask, so before, um, it came up to a vote, and my name comes first now, I wanted to make sure I totally understood what we were voting on, so, um, I think that there was, uh, a question, we're going to give you, um, put our faith in you, that you are going to choose, um, a great agency that we're gonna work with, but I, I was also wondering if we could see who those, um, what those, who those agencies are, and what, um, our goals were, and so that we know, especially if you're using, um, an agency that we've used before, like in the school, did they meet the goals? Uh, I'm sure you're gonna be looking in that, but before I just jumped into the vote, I wanted to make sure that we were, uh, had all that information also, I wasn't sure. Um, but Counsel Murphy asked a lot of that as well, as, as far as the RFP, so thank you.
Hey, Counsel.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor, any other hands, we do have a motion, and I just want to say from the chair, um, again, I spoke with, uh, Bibios, and she, we went through, not the detail, she walked me through some of the bids, and, and the top two that she liked were, one would work with Cambridge and Somerville, uh, another one worked with the school department, there was some work with the police department, so, there's some relationship there, and some great examples, there, there are others, like I said, price dispersion, while twenty-five hundred seems economical, it just didn't seem like they would have, uh, the ability to deliver, I think, the, the type of friend we would want, and some of it's online, uh, and, 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 and some of it was, um, uh, I would just say bland, in my opinion, I, I asked, uh, Bibios her, her talk to, uh, and I think the, the hope is, and this is what I would recommend to the council with the vote, is have her get the talk to, come back to us, uh, and then we can vote it out immediately, just because there is gonna be a financial implication here, but I also wanna, you know, it is February almost, and I, and if it takes us a while, we have eleven counselors. Uh, I, I'm sure everybody who has family lives understand, getting, you know, a family schedule together with three or four people in the house is tough, never mind eleven. So, not that I'm trying to rush this, I just would like to at least initiate the process, and that was the purpose here, so, um, before I go to the motion, Counsel O'Malley's hand is up again, Counsel O'Malley?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I think my understanding is that the, the, um, it's already been narrowed down to two, and my motion is to empower Bibios to select the vendor. If, if there are any counselors that have expertise in this area, I'm not one. Um, I would suggest that maybe it would be helpful to reach, uh, offline to Bibios, uh, you know, as that decision is being made. Uh, but I do believe that, uh, Bibios and the mayor's office and HR are in the best position to, to make the selection. Uh, and as you said, you know, I think we're a hundred and ninety million dollar operation, I think we'll be able to find, uh, the money to, to get this program and, and select the best vendor possible, uh, so my motion would be to empower Bibios to select the vendor.
Okay, discussion on the motion again, let me just see hands. Okay, uh, I, uh, I just gotta.
My hand is up again.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the council, somebody else's hand's up too, so Counsel Murphy, I saw you as first, and Counsel Seminelli, go ahead.
Um, you, you know, I have no problem with, um, Ms. LaRochelle narrowing it down to two, but I do think that it's appropriate that we at least receive, I mean, it, I, I don't want to slow the process down, but I don't think that we should just push this through without our normal due diligence. You know, I, I really do think that, um, she needs to come back and give us a presentation of the two, and listen to our comments about what we think, and then make the decision. But to just, you know, not have any say in this at all, I don't think is the most, is most prudent way for us to move forward, I mean, this is something, um, that, I mean, even Ms. LaRochelle, um, she is, does not, in, in Bibios, so Ms. LaRochelle, uh, nothing against you, but this is a new job for her that she's learning into. This is a new job for many people who are taking this position, and I think we all need to grow in this together, and we all need to kind of understand what's going on, so that we can all embrace it, you know, and really delve into this, you know, with like, yes, this is what we want to do, you know, we're, we're all invested in this, and I think just having her come back and at least tell us what the goals are. I mean, show, yeah, I, I just think that's, so Counsel O'Malley, um, as much as I want to do this, I don't think that you are, that I can go with your, um, motion to just approve this without knowing anything about it, I think we just need a little, we need to have Ms. LaRochelle come back and talk to us about the two she's picked, um, and then from there, say, that's great, now go, you know, listen to our comments, and then go and, then, at that point, go and pick, um, the appropriate vendor. So, I would make a motion that we amend your motion to say that we give Ms. LaRochelle the ability to pick the vendor once she has come back and explained to us what the goals are, and a little bit about the two vendors, and allow us to give comment to her. And then, she'll be able to move forward.
Okay, so I need a second for that, that, that amendment, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Seminelli, okay, is the second amendment, we're not gonna vote on the amendments right now, we have some discussion, I have a lot of hands up now, so, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Murphy, you both have amendments, I'm gonna, we're gonna have discussion, I don't think there's any opposition to that, so, Counsel Seminelli's next, and then Counsel Winslow, so Counsel Murphy, uh, before I give it over to Counsel Seminelli, you, you all set with your, your, uh, points?
I, I am, and I will.
Okay, and, 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 and before I give it to Counsel Seminelli, I did send a quick, uh, email, I wanted to make sure, I knew there was, I knew there was some parameters, I forgot the amount. I want to make sure that we, we do, uh, I, well, I want to make sure that, that, um, that, uh, that, uh, Bibios did, did not do anything that was outside the norm, because the amount is under fifty thousand dollars, we, and, we only require three quotes and not a full RFP package. Uh, I knew there was a number there, so, uh, I understand what the, what the need here and, and coming back and information, but I just want to make sure that Bibios is not looked upon like, uh, we didn't do it the right way, because of the amount's under fifty thousand dollars, you just need to have three quotes, I believe when you go with fifty thousand dollars, that's when you need a full RFP package, just to clarify for the council, to make sure that we know that Bibios was doing everything in the right, that, that right context, not that anybody was saying that, but I just want to let everybody know. Counsel Seminelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you, I think you kind of answered the first part of my question, is that the RFP in itself, is it, is it, uh, but I think you answered it. So we don't have to go out and bid for that.
You have to, you can get three bids, you don't have to do a formal RFP, two different processes.
Okay, and then, second, where I wasn't here, uh, when you guys put this resolve forward, I kind of echoed my colleague, Counselor Murphy, on, I don't think it would delay the process too much, if we just had, uh, Bibios come back to us and, uh, tell us about the two proposals that she likes the best, and why she likes them the best, and, and, uh, what the subject matter will be, and, and what she thinks that we need here in the city. But I, I'd like to, to know about those things, uh, before I move forward and, and rush this through. Um, and I, working in the Department of Corrections, uh, we used to have to teach these classes, in-service training, and also, uh, in the new recruits that come in for the academy. So, you know, I just, just kind of want to get a sense of, you know, where we are, what seems to be some of the problems that we may be facing, and how we're gonna deal with those, and then, obviously, uh, the, the bids that did come back, uh, you did talk a little bit about some of the experience, I think that one of the groups had. Um, but I'd like to know what the other ones offer as well, before we actually get deep into it. In case any of us have any questions, we might want to add some things, and, you know, that we might think that, that, that are problems. So, you know, I would, uh, I would just ask, I guess that we just, we do that.
Okay, Counsel Seminelli, you all set?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Counsel Winslow?
Well, I just, um, you know, if we want to take a little bit more time, I mean, one suggestion I have, we do have the, a new committee set up, the Intercultural Competence and Awareness Committee, I know that's not fully formed, but, uh, Counsel Seminelli's in charge of that, perhaps next Wednesday at the Council of the Whole, um, Bibios could come and speak, uh, to that committee, and any counselors could participate to get that update, um, that way, we could do that, and then, then by the following, you know, full council meeting, we could, uh, you know, there could be a recommendation, the whole council could endorse. Uh, so, that, that would be my suggestion of, uh, we have a new committee, we have, uh, maybe we should rely on that committee to help us, uh, uh, vet this decision and make a recommendation.
Okay, uh, so let me go to Bibios, Bibios, do you think you would be, uh, from a time perspective, I think you've heard what the councils, uh, uh, questions are, at least objectives, um, and, and, and would you be able to, be able to make a presentation if Counsel Seminelli were to uh, have a committee meeting next week with the two, uh, finalists, and based on recommendations to present to the, to the, to that committee?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, okay, so Counsel Seminelli, would you commit to having that meeting, um, next week?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we would probably, I would ask Counsel Seminelli and the clerk to work together to make sure, I know committee meetings are always tough, but this is an important topic, if we could make sure that there's no other meetings at the same time, or at least, uh, you know, the, the bulk of the meeting is, is able, so all the councils go to attend, I think it's an important uh, decision, so we can, then we could, uh, give Bibios, uh, I think, um, some indication next week, where the direction, the, the, uh, the committee's direction is, and hopefully if the, the entire council participates, the direction of the council, and that way, the following, which, which I believe is the, I think it's the eighth, right, I was looking at the calendar, the eighth, we could vote uh, on the Council of the Whole, but this would also give, I think, allow Bibios that additional week to start engaging with, with them, and, and really hopefully not wasting anybody's time. How does that sound? Uh, I see Counsel, uh, Winslow's hand still up, because Seminelli, no other, no other points, right, you just can take them down? Okay.
Yeah, no, you can take them down.
Any discussion on that, we, we, go ahead, Counsel, Counsel.
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Counsel Winslow, I think that was a great idea.
All right, so we have two motions, do you want to merge them, is that, we still want to vote them separate? Counselor O'Malley's hand is up again.
Well, I was thinking, what we could do is, I think that Counsel Winslow's suggestion does make a lot of sense, ma- maybe we can uh, just refer this to that committee, and let that committee make the decision, uh, based on the recommendation of Bibios. I think that that is probably the ideal circumstance, I don't think it has to come back to the full council, we have a committee for a reason, uh, and we have staff that we have confidence in, uh, to get the job done. That, that would be a friendly amendment, if Counsel Murphy is, is willing to, uh, trust the committee to handle, uh, carry this over the finish line.
Counselor, that's, uh, so I have a motion or amendment, excuse me, on that, do I have a second?
Condon's hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Con- Counsel, Counsel Condon, I, glad to see you there, Counsel Condon, sprung into action, go ahead, Counsel Condon.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, just thinking about this, you know, we're the ones that are being trained, and all the training I received over the years with the postal service, human resources, set up the training, and we would be trained, all the managers would be trained. And, uh, I don't know, I think, uh, Videos would be the person to choose the program best needed for us. I don't think, uh, as a council, we should be choosing who we want to train us. And that's just the way I feel about it, uh, either that, or human resources confer with her, and come up with the right people to come and train us in the different, uh, um, areas where we have strengths and weaknesses. Because I'm sure we have both, so that's the way I feel about it, thank you.
Okay, let me just make sure I see the full screen here, everybody, give me one second, okay, uh, Counsel Con- Counselor Hayes, you have the floor.
Um, thank you, um, I, so my question would be, I, I was hoping to hear the presentation before we came down to a vote, so I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant as well, I, I, I also agree with, um, Counsel Condon, I do know that that is, um, Bibios's special, that, that's what we hired her for, I, I have full confidence in you picking the group. Uh, my question was answered about the RFP, I was a little confused about that, and I am, um, willing to wait to get the two that you were going to narrow it down to, I thought that was going to come in the presentation, so, um, it's kind of hard to, to take this all through before we haven't even heard from you, um, but, um, that's, that's how I'm, I'm feeling now too, I, I, I think I'm, I'm moving towards with Counsel Condon, thank you.
I, I can actually provide feedback on the two, so the two are Mandaz, the Mandaz Group. Um, the Mandaz Group has actually done, um, DI training with the school committee. And, um, so they're really focused on the four goals, which is personal, interpersonal, introspective work, um, and they're really trying to make sure that it is a comfortable and space, safe space. We talked a lot about terminology, so they're really gonna focus on terminology, um, and really bringing things down to the basics. So they're really, and they're gonna have a very in-depth presentation on the difference between equity and equality. Um, so they are the ones who are, are at the twenty-five thousand mark, um, they've been doing the work for twenty years. Uh, and they have glowing reviews from Mayor Christensen, um, actually Superintendent Ligia, uh, Noriega Murphy, and many in city counselors in Somerville, Cambridge, so they are very committed to the work. Um, and they are the top choice, which I will be going back to them to have a, a further discussion. The second group is Tessie, um, Consulting, they are located in Boston, they do a lot of work with, um, Senator officers at this moment. And, um, they do a lot of work with the police department, they actually partner up with the retired police chief, and I was thinking about how that could be very helpful when we do the DEI training for the police department, for the city of Malden. Um, and so they do offer webinars, they do offer online versions of this, um, very detailed. Uh, I just think that the only reason why I was leaning towards the Mendaz Group is just because they've already worked with Malden, understand the community have, you know, and so they may have a little bit more personal attachment to it, um, and be able to bring up some examples that are really specific to Malden, while Tessie has not worked with Malden, but does offer really great services. The other agencies, um, are Visions, which is also a part of Massachusetts, and the other three are actually out of state. Um, and that doesn't take away from their work, I just know that they don't specifically know Malden.
Okay, we have a couple. Sorry, Counsel, uh, thank you, Bibios, uh, you all set, Counselor? Counselors, uh, uh, I, I, I think it was Karen, uh, Counsel Karen Hayes, was Cologne Hayes.
I'm good, thank you very much. I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you, so Counsel Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Bibios, thank you for that quick overview. That was really helpful to hear. I'm wondering if you know if either are women or BIPOC owned and if either is on the state contract.
Tessie, both of them are not on the state contracts. Tessie is woman and BIPOC owned. The Mandaz Group is BIPOC owned and the co-facilitator is a woman.
Awesome, thank you.
Counselor Semenelli, is your hand up again?
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, Counsel Semenelli, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I would just echo my sentiments again, and, you know, we're talking next week. And I would like to have a chance to sit down and and talk with Bibios, because I really haven't had a chance to talk, talk to you much, you know, just getting on the council. And like I said, this resolve was put through, which I'm all in favor of it. I just want to be, and where we have this new committee, Mr. President, I, you know, like, I think that's a good opportunity to start things off in the right direction by having both, you know, a committee from the city council sitting down with Bibios, so she can explain to me some of these, or to the committee for that matter, you know, some, why she likes certain ones over other one, over other companies that may come in and and do this. Because I think that we we do have to listen to her and and, you know, that's her forte. But I would like to, I don't think a week, by holding it back a week to talk about the 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 different plans that you have for this, for this council committee, I I think that we can work in a united front, too, and and push this thing along. So I I don't think that we're, you know, doing too much by delaying it back a week. I echo, I I agree with Counsel Condon, too, that, you know, at the end of the day, it should be left up to to Bibios and to Human, Human Resources. And, you know, they're the experts in that field. But I think it's a, it's a coming upon us with this committee to sit down and and go over these things and and talk about these things. And I'd like to get educated and I think the committee, it's a, it's a start in the right direction to get educated as well. Because like I said, I I have, I wasn't here previous, when you guys were moving all these papers forward and these resolves forward. I kind of come in the tail end when you put the, put that paper through. And and you did it in a record time and pace, too, let me tell you, Bibios, you did a great job with this. And I do, I would like to just sit down and go over things and I'd like to pick your brain on some things. That'll help me out in my position. So once again, I, you know, I would ask that, you know, if we can, you know, move on that motion to, you know, have it meet up with that committee. That would be good.
All right, so so it seems like, I believe it was Counsel O'Malley's original motion, which he did amend, to now send it to the new form committee, Intercultural Competence and Awareness Committee, which will meet next week. We we have it here and then we'll have an answer and then empower, which I agree with. I I think we, the council has to be certainly in part of the process, but cannot determine the path this process takes. We'll find the resources. And and I I do know there's a Counsel Murphy wants to speak, but I just want to make sure that is the the vote on the table. So Counsel Murphy, I believe you have your hand up. Oh, Counsel, I'm sorry, Counsel, I still didn't think you'd take it down. Counsel Condon and then Counsel Murphy. I apologize. Counsel Condon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have absolutely no problem with Counsel Semenelli's committee reviewing and meeting with video, Videos. But I think it's important that we send the right message from the bottom of the organization, right through to the top of the organization. And it should be consistent, this training, so that everybody's on the same page, trained in the same things in the way the Malden community wants to go about this. So I think that's very, very important. Thank you.
Well said, Counsel, well said, great. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I, yes, Counsel Condon, I agree with your last statement totally. I do agree with the motion to send this to Counsel Semenelli's committee. I think it's what we need to recognize here tonight is that it is the city council who put this resolve forward. And yes, I agree that Ms. LaRochelle or HR should be the ultimate choosers of the group that is going to train us. But in any corporation, okay, management decides, you know, what is going to happen and how it's going to move forward, where the money is going to come from. So we want to give Ms. LaRochelle and HR the opportunity to pick the appropriate vendor. But I also think that we need to make sure that that vendor encompasses all of the goals that we have as a community that we want to meet. Which is why I know we don't have to do the RFP because it's less than 50,000 now. But we still need to understand what the goals are that we want to reach. And as Counselor Cologne Hayes said tonight, she was expecting a presentation. And we did not get that tonight. And Ms. LaRochelle was able to just recently kind of, you know, give us some information about the two she's narrowed down to. And I think it would be beneficial to all of us to have a little bit more detail about those two, what they can provide to us. And we might find something on candidate one, the candidate two doesn't offer, that we feel is very important, that we want to say to Ms. LaRochelle, can you go back to candidate one and see if they can include this? So I think it's just, it's going to be very helpful for us to sit down in Counsel Semenelli's committee. And I hope that our clerk of committees can, a city clerk, excuse me, you know, can work this so that we all can be, you know, participant in that meeting. And then say, yes, we're happy with the, with the goals that we've, that we're looking for. And Ms. LaRochelle, go pick the vendor that can meet these. Because it, once again, it's it's the city council's resolve that we want to be trained. We want the city to be trained. So I'm very happy to refer this to, you know, Mr. Semenelli, Counsel Semenelli's committee. And I hope that that's the way the vote will go this evening.
Hey, hold your thoughts.
Be a very fast process, so, you know, the following week, we can vote it out and Ms. LaRochelle can, you know, get down to business and make sure that we all get the training that we need.
Yep, thank you, Counsel Murphy. Counselor Karen Pauls.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. You know, I just want to acknowledge, this is a, it's a, it can be an emotionally charged topic and it can feel like there's a lot at stake every time we talk about race at the council virtual table. And so I I think more discussion is helpful and want to make sure everybody has a chance to ask their questions. And so I really appreciate the the quick work that that you've done with this Bibios. And I just wanted to invite Counselor Semenelli, since we're the two counselors on this intercultural committee, we haven't had a chance to talk about that because we're also missing, you know, we haven't made any of these appointments that are also contemplated yet, right? So I just wanted to know if we could have Ms. LaRochelle, as well as Maria Louise, our two ex officio members, and and be able to have a little open conversation in that committee about what, you know, we think is useful. I would love to hear from from Bibios and Maria Louise as well about what they, you know, think will be most effective for the council to focus on. In my experience working with consultants like this, you know, you select a vendor, but I, like, I'm sure we have a lot. I'm sure any of these vendors can get us what we need. This is, you know, quite a strong field at this point. And then just as important is going to be what we, you know, ask them to focus on. So perhaps we can talk about that as well, beyond just the selection of vendors in that, in that committee next week.
All right, Counsel Condon, you have your hand up again?
No.
Okay, well, all right, I'll low, I'll lower it so I don't get confused. A lot of hands here. All right, so it seems a great discussion, everybody. Again, I just want to thank Bibios, she did a great job, took, took what the council at the time instructed to do right before Christmas. And we're now, we're looking about four weeks away and came up with these six. And like I said, I I really had a discussion with her today. And if there's any, you know, presentation, please don't, I don't think anybody's reflecting on Bibios. But it was something that I thought, you know, the council wanted to get to the, to at least an answer quickly, which I still think they do, but now we'll just send it to that committee, which I think is a great discussion point. And we still will hit our timetable. Because I, from my perspective as a president, I certainly heard loud and clear what the, what the council wanted that year. I know there's some new members on here, but I will take up last year's agenda and certainly carry it forward. And I know that the the residents have also asked about this. So I'm going to put a timetable that we meet this next week, and I'm sure we will. And that Bibios can have a final answer within two weeks, so we can start this process for the spring. Because as we know, our council agenda start getting real busy. And I don't want this to fall back in the the foreground, which I don't think it will. But this is something I will continue to push for with Bibios. So Bibios, thank you for taking time out of your day, both the this morning as well as today. And we will have a meeting next week. I'll allow Counsel Semenelli, as well as Counsel McDonald, to schedule that time for next week. I work with a clerk. So we do have a motion, I believe, and clerk Lucy, keep, keep me honest. I believe it was the amendment on Counsel O'Malley, which I think was seconded by Counsel Linehan, is that correct? Yep.
That was the, that was the original motion, yeah.
So she just seconded again, so that's the amendment she seconded, right, Counsel Linehan?
Yep.
So now we do have a second on that amendment. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Can you read the actual, what we're voting on right now, please?
I can, I can clarify. It's, it's to refer this discussion and empower the Mr. Semenelli's committee and Bibios LaRochelle to select the vendor and and talk about.
Two, select two, Counsel, right?
My understanding is we already, we're at two right now.
Yeah, to bring the two down, though, right? Isn't that the question?
Maybe, no, it's to let that committee select the vendor, the single vendor.
Oh, yes, yes, that committee, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, Counsel.
That's, that's my motion.
Okay, so the motion is a combined, go ahead.
No, I was saying the same thing, I just, I thought, I said it wrong. So Counsel, Counsel O'Malley has it right.
So the motion is to combine your original motion, which was to give Bibios, she would be able to select the, the organization we're going for. And now you added, along with that, to move it to committee. And there, that's where the decision will be made?
Yeah, so I, maybe I'll, so it was amended, so it was, original motion was to empower Bibios. Now it's been, I don't want to say not empower, but now we're amending that. Counsel O'Malley amended that to send it to Intercultural Competence and Awareness Committee, where they will work with Bibios in that committee to make the decision on which vendor to choose and go forward. And and the entire council will be cut of that process, Counsel Cologne. So that's why I asked the clerk to try not to overlap clerk schedules, so that everybody can participate in that dialogue.
Okay, and it doesn't mean that if we vote no, that it cannot go to that committee for discussion, not on this, but just in general? We can talk about it in that committee?
If you vote, if if there's, if there's more no's than yes, it can't go to that committee. We got to start over.
Okay.
So if you vote no, and nobody else votes no, we'll go to the committee. So just majority vote moves to the committee.
Okay. Cologne Hayes, no.
Okay.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Sika.
Sika, yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes.
Carries 10 to 1.
Okay, that motion's carries. I I'll say it again, it's worth repeating, so Chairman Semenelli and Counsel McDonald, next week is a meeting. And Bibios, just be prepared for next week's meeting, so we can move this along. I appreciate it, Bibios.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, you're welcome. Next order of business, public comments. Clerk Lucy, has there been any public comments?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, not that he's aware of, so I say that's no. Next order of business?
We have approval of minutes, paper 10 dash 22, the minutes of meeting January 11th and paper 11 dash 22 minutes of the meeting of January 18th.
Motion approved.
On Counselor Sika's motion to approve the minutes of January 11th and the minutes of January 18th, I don't see any hands up, I didn't see any others. Excuse me?
Second.
All seconded.
I'm sorry, so on Counsel Sika's motion to approve the minutes of the 11th, January, and January 18th, seconded by Counsel Condon, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan, yes.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley. O'Malley. Sika.
Sika, yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes, minutes are approved. Next order of business.
Paper 12 dash 22, mayoral appointment, Ralph Long III, 109 Essex Street, Malden, to the Disability Commission, set term to commence upon confirmation by city council and to expire September 22nd, 2022. Ralph will fulfill the unexpired, inexpired term of Caroline Combe, who recently resigned.
On Counsel Semenelli's, excuse me, on Counsel Semenelli's motion to refer to the Appointments and Personnel Committee, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley. Sika.
O'Malley, yes.
Semenelli, I'm sorry, Sika.
Sika, yes.
Semenelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. It's been referred appointments. Counsel Semenelli, I know your hand is up, I didn't want to interrupt the clerk during the vote. Can you, you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on the, I mean, the next paper, 1322, the reappointment of James Tuxbury. I just wanted to see if we can vote it out on the floor again tonight. Once again, this is a reappointment. You know, we, everybody knows James Tuxbury, he's been on compliance for many years. Also, you know, I think he retired as a captain of the Malden Police Department. So everybody knows him, so I just think that this is something that should just be voted out on the floor. I mean, unless anyone has any objections to it.
I would second that.
Okay, hold on, hold on, I have a couple of hands up. Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Hayes, so Counsel O'Malley, you are first, and Counsel Hayes.
Yeah, thank you, I have no opposition to to reappointment. One of the questions that I I do have, though, and I don't know if we ever finished this conversation. Counsel Spatafora, you had taken the lead on figuring out the special municipal employee situation. Do we, do we need to be designating members who are getting multiple paychecks as special municipal employees? Or like, have we got that under control yet? Because I know, for instance, he's the compliance officer and also would be it is on the the board of the cemetery trustees. I just don't know where that that status is and whether or not we need to, like, make a designation.
So, so I don't, I will, you know, full disclosure, I don't, I don't remember, I don't recall seeing this position because the special municipal status is at the, it's it's on the use, not the person. But but Attorney Fallon is on. Attorney Fallon, do you remember seeing this individual, these roles on that list? I don't recall, Kate, and I don't mean to put you on the the spot, Attorney Fallon.
I do know.
Okay, so hold on, so Kate.
So, well, I'm sure Attorney Fallon knows, too, but if she's, you know.
Okay, so Attorney Fallon, you have the floor, and then I'll.
I don't, I don't actually know that. I think that Greg, Greg maintains that information and I don't remember the last time I had an updated list of that. Unfortunately.
And I can say the cemetery trustees is on that list, special municipal.
So was that already, that was already approved, right?
In 1963.
Yeah. So that was already approved, correct?
Correct, the cemetery trustees, yes.
Yeah. Counselor O'Malley, does that answer your question? Or does it create more? Counselor?
Yes, that answered my question, so I give you a thumbs up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, I was playing with the attendees. Let me see, Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes, you're next. Uh, let me see. Uh, Counselor Karen Cologne Hayes, you're next.
Uh, thank you, and uh, my question is, I'm, I don't have the pleasure of knowing. Mister Tuxbury, like um Counselor Simonelli was saying, so I I just quickly looked through my email to see are we sent um. I don't know, performance reviews or like resumes or anything. I I don't have enough. Information to vote on something tonight. Does it usually go to the committee?
Uh, it depends on the individual in the world, to be quite honest, Counselor. So.
Okay.
Usually, if it's a referral, in the past, we've, we've sometimes done it on the floor, and other times we've we've sent it to committee, but uh. It is not always a given to me the direction. And that's why I think Counsel Simonelli is asking for additional input. But I do have other hands up, so. I don't want to stifle the bait. You all set, Counsel? Cool, Karen, Cologne Hayes.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Counsel.
You're welcome. Counselor Karen McDonald, then I believe some Counsel Simonelli's hand up. So Counselor Karen McDonald, for the first time.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to support this tonight on this recommendation, but I just want to say, I think that as a matter of practice. It's helpful for us to just refer all appointments to the personnel committee. I mean, I I just don't feel like I know. I I I also don't particularly know this individual, and so I just, I don't know enough and and would appreciate the chance to be able to. To review it, uh, to review reappointments. Um, and I just think in the interest of predictability and and fairness, so that, you know. We all know as counselors that we will expect it to be referred to personnel or something like that, that it is. That my help would be to to follow that practice in the future and and, you know, happy to talk about if there are other guidelines we should use. At a future date.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Uh, we have a couple of hand up, so I'm gonna go with, uh, like I said, Counsel Simonelli. I don't know if your hand is still up. You uh, you went further, and then I do have Counsel Crowe and Counsel Seeker haven't spoken, so. Counsel, do you want to add more information, or do you want to? Okay, so. Next, then Counsel Seeker. Thank you. Counselor Crowe, and then Counsel Sika.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just as, um, the former chair of the appointments personnel. We do usually refer all um appointments and reappointments to committee. It is a great opportunity to actually talk about, just kind of talk to people, and. It's only the new appointments that we get a resume for. Um, usually, the reappointments, but we just kind of talk about what's been going on, what's some of the accomplishments, what some of the goals are. Um, the um, when the last time we were on um, on Zoom meetings, we actually um. Had a policy that we were just gonna um rea- the reappointments would do sort of on the floor and not. Um. Uh, yeah, we would just automatically sort of reappoint, and the reason is, it is precious time when you can't have like. Multiple meetings going on at the same time, but even the um, the new appointments, we still have um, an opportunity. We, we did not do those on the floor. We just did the reappointments, just in this time that we're on Zoom, and again. After, hopefully when we're back and um, uh, all together again, it is a a great opportunity to sort of meet each other. I've always done it when we do it as a group, because it's great for um. Someone from the planning board to hear what's going on at the cemetery board, or because there's so many exciting things going on, but. Again, um, usually we've done these as we're in Zoom, reappointments on the floor, so we don't take up um. Um, time.
Hey, Counsel Crowe, great insight. Counselor Sika.
I'm good, um, Council President. I was going to say the same thing that um Counselor Crowe just mentioned during um. Uh, Zoom meetings, the last time we were remote, we decided um, as a council that we would reappoint uh. People on the floor so that we didn't take up time for the committees, so I was just gonna, I echo Counselor Crowe's. Um, comments on this, and I think that we should just move if nobody's already made a motion, I'll make a motion. That we suspend council rules, or better yet, I I don't think that. Um, Clerk Lucy has even read this paper yet. So, before we we take a vote, I think Clerk Lucy needs to read this paper. Counselor Simonelli. Spoke about it before the clerk.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. We do have to suspend dock rules. We do have some other hands up. I just, I I wanted to get through this before.
That's fine.
Well, you'll make the, you'll make the motion to suspend dock rules. I get that, Counsel Sika, we get that right.
You should probably have him read the paper too, no? Shouldn't we?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have him read the paper. I I just want to get through the one last, uh, well, the paper on, all right, so.
Well, I don't think we should technically be discussing this topic until the clerk reads the paper.
Well, this is the referral, right?
We, we haven't, he hasn't read the paper yet on the docket.
Oh, okay.
Counselor Simonelli spoke about it before the clerk read the paper.
That's right, because I I went after him after the, because he had his head up early.
Anybody to forget to read the paper, so maybe before you listen to anybody else's comments, we have the clerk read the paper.
Thank you for keeping me honest.
Thank you, sorry.
No, no, that's fair, that's fair. A lot of hands up. We have a lively discussion today, and I have a lot of things. It's good. So Counselor. So Clerk Lucy can just read the paper so we can have it in the record, and then we can go through with the motions.
It's paper thirteen dash twenty-two, twenty-two, council reappointment, James Tuxbury, one eleven Glen Street, Malden. As cemetery trustee, term to expire March first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Lucy. Counsel O'Malley, your hand up again?
Yeah, just just for the edification of the the um, the counselors that have recently joined. Um, so we do have a council rulebook. That you hopefully have been provided, and um. On page eighteen and nineteen are the committees, and that's where it tells you what the the committee shall do. Uh, and here, uh, to Counselor McDonald's point, you know, the Personnel and Appointments Committee shall review candidates. Uh, so it doesn't give them the option not to. Uh, so before, as Counsel Sika had said, uh, before we can. Um, uh, move forward with an appointment on the floor, we have to first suspend the rules of the council. Uh, that requires a two-thirds vote, uh, or or eight individuals. Uh, we have done it, uh, you know, more recently, uh, very frequently. Um, but I do think, you know, since we do have a a, a number of new counselors, it probably would be ideal. Uh, for them to have the opportunity to meet uh reappointments, so I would support that. Um, I have no problem with suspending the rules thi- this time. Um, but I do think we should start moving back to to normal operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Let me just get my bearings here. All right, so Counselor Murphy hasn't spoken this topic yet, so I'm gonna go to Counsel Mur- Counsel Murphy.
Uh, yes, I agree with everything that was just said. I mean, I, you know, I agree with um, you know. What we did when we were in Zoom mode. Um, over the last two years and how personnel and appointments was handled, the reappointments. Uh, it really was the only way to go for us as a, a city council to conduct business. Um, here's hoping um, to next month, that we are all back in City Hall. Um, with each other, being able to hold meetings in our lovely new City Hall, and being able to bring people in. Um, so that we can have a discussion with them, because it is very, it's not only good for us, it's good for them. Um, to tell us, you know, as Counselor Crowe indicated, you know, what their goals are, what their objectives are. You know, how they're interacting with other commissions, how they're interacting, you know, within the city government. So I am all for that. But tonight, once again, we are all sitting here on Zoom, so I think that, you know, with Mister Tuxbury's reappointment. On the floor, it's very appropriate. Um, I have been on the cemetery committee for a number of years. Um, I've worked closely with Mister Tuxbury, and I can say that he, uh, for those of you who don't know him. He's dedicated. Uh, you see him as a compliance officer. I see him as that, but I also see him as a cemetery. Um, a a person who is a guardian of our Forestdale Cemetery and the other cemeteries in the city. He's committed. Um, he's there for any questions that anyone has, um, and he basically has taken. Um, his role as a committee member, uh, very seriously. And I fully support his reappointment this evening on the floor, so I would hope that you would vote him out uh favorably this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Condon, I'm going for the ones who haven't spoke first, so Counselor Condon.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Um, I don't think there's any intent to uh slight. Some of the newer counselors, but being in this situation with Zoom. When we're meeting at City Hall, we have sometimes double meetings. At each interval from five thirty to seven. We can't do that with Zoom, so we were getting backed up, uh, where we would just have one meeting at five thirty. Next one probably at six, and if it was ordinance, you're lucky if you could get a third meeting in. So that's what makes it difficult, but you'll be working with uh. Mister Tuxbury probably more than any other person on any of these committees, because uh, we work with him. As our compliance people do, um, do us a great service. In being responsive to our needs as counselors, but I think at least during Zoom. We have to push some of these reappointments through, and I know myself in over thirty years of serving, I can't remember the last time a reappointment. Wasn't reappointed, but I understand what they're saying. They'd like to meet the person. It's just it makes it very difficult right now on Zoom. I think you'll see that when we try to schedule meetings, and you just can't even. Get a meeting scheduled. There'd be times as license chairman, I'd have to wait three, four weeks to even get a meeting in. But uh. We can move forward and I'll vote the way I see fit. Thank you.
Hey, Counsel Condon, Counselor, there's a lot of hands still up that just spoke, so I don't think Counsel Murphy wants to speak again. I don't think Counsel Condon, so I'm gonna go to Counsel Sika, and then. Let me just make sure, Simonelli, Counselor Sika? Did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, no, that was still up. I apologize.
Okay. Counselor Simonelli, you have the last vote, last, I'm sorry, your last to speak on this topic.
No, you got it right. You got it right, Mr. President. Uh, listen, I think, I think moving forward, I think that we're saying that next week. Uh, I mean, next month, we're gonna be back in in regular session downstairs, and then, you know, we can go back to our norm and, you know. Oh, I do agree with, you know, a couple of counselors that, you know, if they don't know some of the people that are being reappointed, and they want to get a, you know. Uh, acquainted with them, th- uh, they should, and that's a good opportunity to do that. Uh, but under past practice, under the COVID situation and going to the Zoom meetings. And what Counselor Condon has said, and and several other counselors have said, you know, it's um. It's about scheduling, it's about getting uh, bottlenecked uh, with with these committee meetings. Uh, so, you know, after, I I would like to, after maybe uh, after the. Zoom meetings are done and we're back to regular session, then referring from there on in uh, to this committee. I'll I'll make sure that, you know, we refer, you know, uh, new appointments and and reappointments i- i- if that's the will of the council. I I don't have any problem with that, because I think you should meet these people and and talk with them and and have dialogue. Uh, I I just think that uh, now during the Zoom time, I think that, you know, any reappointments, we should, you know, just, I mean, unless there's an issue. Uh, then we should just move them on the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counsel Simonelli, so I believe if I engaging the c- council right, we will uh, suspend docket rules for this. Uh, for Mister Tuxbury, which I support, uh, wholeheartedly, I, but I do have the benefit of knowing um, Mister Tuxbury for a long time. Uh, and then understand that new counselors want to have the ability to ask questions and certainly dig into their backgrounds and. Uh, and understand their roles and functions within the City of Malden Department, so fully respect that. Uh, so I believe there's gonna be, there is a motion to suspend off rules by Counsel Sika. I do need a second on that. Do I have a second?
It's to suspend council rules.
Yeah, to suspend side councils, correct. So on Counsel Simonelli, I think he asked first, so on Counselor Sika's motion to suspend docket rules. Seconded by Counsel Simonelli, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes, on council rules.
Sika.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Rules are suspended. Do I have a motion? I believe Counsel Simonelli, did you make a motion to approve Mister Tuxbury?
Second, and Counsel Murphy seconded it early.
So I'll allow Counsel Murphy second. So on, um, no discussion, no hands, so on Counselor. Uh, Simonelli's motion to approve James Tuxbury uh, to reappointments. On the Cemetery Commission, seconded by Counselor Barbara Murphy, clerk will call the word.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Sika.
Sika, yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Mister Tuxbury has been reappointed. Uh, I got a quick update on the uh, no surprise, but uh, quick update, date from the uh, Wakefield Group. Community group, which was an email. The new vocational high school has been approved, seven thousand four hundred eighty-six yeas. And fifteen hundred and sixty-eight news. So. Uh, good opportunity for those schoo- students to have uh, a new school. Um, those are district-wide totals. Uh, now the fun begins with all the communities looking for uh, some funding, and that will be certainly an area of. Talk, we'll be talking about in some of the the newer committees, and certainly finance going forward, but I did want to share that with the. The council and certainly the audience, uh, that that's certainly passed by no surprise. Next order of business.
We have three livery license, we have paper fourteen dash twenty-two, livery, Neville Faris, one forty, Clifton Street Apartment Two. One vehicle, it's renewal. We have paper fifteen dash twenty-two, livery, Amanda Singh, seventy-nine Way Street Extension. Apartment thirty-two, one vehicle, it's a renewal, and paper sixteen dash twenty-two, livery, Ideal Park Limo. Steven Azagwen, sixty-one High Rock Road, one vehicle, it's a renewal.
Motion to refer the license.
Yeah, on Counsel Sika's motion to refer, the petition is to license, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Sika.
Sika, yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. They have been referred to license. Next order of business.
Paper seventeen dash twenty-two, order be hereby ordained that Title Seven, Chapter Twenty, Section one oh one. Of the Code of the City of Malden be amended relative regulation of specific breeds of trapped and park. To be eliminated in order to comply with Mass General Law's Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven. Which stipulates that no city or town should regulate dogs in a manner that is specific to breed.
Counsel, what's over the paper?
Yes, um, this is actually a paper that Counselor Kamel introduced back in uh, the two thousand eighteen term. It was paper seventy-four um, eighteen. Um, it went to rules and ordinance. The Rules and Ordinance Committee supported that paper. Did not ever get to the council docket, though. So, um, and basically, um. We have right now some rules that apply to the Trachten Dog Park, and that that specifically exclude like pitfalls. And so, under state law, um. Ordinances cannot uh discriminate on basis of breed. So, um, so this was to make our dog park ordinance consistent with state law. And it just, for whatever reason, it did not get uh, passed on from a favorable recommendation of rules and ordinance at that time. To the city council, so, um, and because since two thousand eighteen, we have updated our ordinances. Uh, when I, you know, Counsel Kamel is sort of, and I did a transition for Ward Six. Um, and he wanted to make sure this paper did get to go forward. Uh, since we, we've updated the whole ordinance book, we needed to go back and and uh, City Clerk Lucy has taken um, the opportunity to. Change the original paper, so it's consistent with the now, the current twenty twenty ordinances, so. So this is just a paper to, you know, do what we uh, proposed to do in twenty eighteen, and just didn't get through the process, so that's uh. I guess my my motion ultimately would be to refer this to rules and ordinance, and then have to come back, so.
So Counsel Winslow completely support. I did speak to Clerk Lucy, and I know Attorney Fallon is on. I I I talked to Clerk. Lucy, and we don't think we need to refer it because state law would override it, so I think we could just vote on the floor. To accept the state law and update the, uh, update it. If you want to send it to the ordinance committee, I don't have a problem with it, but I don't think we need to step, we'd have to make. Uh, unneeded work, uh, but I, after speaking to uh Clerk Lucy today on that. Uh, we just think we can accept the Mass General Law one forty, section one fifty-seven, update our zoning. Uh, we just think we can accept the Mass General Law One Forty, Section One Fifty-seven, update our zoning ordinance. We can certainly ask for a vote here on the floor, but I would ask Attorney Fallon if that's acceptable, if not, we will send it to ordinance.
So, uh, Mr. President, it, it, the changes relating to the regulation as it pertains to pit bull, you don't have to accept the statute. But the, my understanding is the change is necessary and was vetted already by the council. To render the ordinance consistent with the law. So I think it's muzzling of pit bulls at the park was what I understood the change to be. And the law says you can't have that regulation, so this went through. The regular channels of the council for vetting, because the law changed some time ago. So what I think you should do in light of actually your next paper. Is just suspend whatever rules applied to this because it, for some reason, didn't carry forward. It's just a simple change to render it consistent with law. Um, and you know, as you said, it doesn't, if you want to send it back to committee for the newer members to review, you can. But it's really just a change to make sure that your ordinance is consistent or Malden's ordinance is consistent with the law. In terms of removing that, uh, provisions that relate to pit bull, yes, specific.
So, so. So, uh, Counsel Winslow, this is your paper and your ward, I would refer to you, your, your, your way.
So I'm fine, I mean, I would, uh, you know, think the chair of rules and ordinance is fine with, uh, taking this paper up tonight. I'm, I'm fine, like I say, it was referred, it's a very straightforward type of, uh, ordinance update and was. Vetted back in twenty eighteen, you know, approved by committee, just did not get, so I'm fine with, uh, moving ahead and, and, uh. Planning to enroll it tonight, so we can always wait to, and, and, and ordain it a few weeks, if anybody has more questions, we can follow up directly. If the specific.
All right, any questions on that? So I believe, okay, Counsel O'Malley first and then Counsel Murphy, Counsel O'Malley?
Yeah, if, uh, the, the, hearing about this is concerning, um, because I think twenty eighteen was one of our last years on, on the council in terms of. Um, a lot of the work we did that didn't end up actually ever making it into the official, uh, record. Um, so I am one hundred percent in support of doing this on the floor. Um, I, I don't think there's any need to send it to ordinance. Um, and I, one of the things I'd ask is the city clerk, if, if you could try to, like. Find out what papers were referred out of committee. But never made it on the floor. Uh, I don't know if there's a way we, we can do that with Granicus. But it, it would be helpful to kind of know, you know, back in those, those, those years, what we, what we passed out that might not have ever. Uh, was finished for, for whatever reason. But yeah, I support the, the motion to do this on the floor. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am in full support of this and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Counsel Winslow, I'm gonna hold up a little award here, kind of a little known fact. Um, and it reads MSPCA Angel, Animal Hall of Fame, two thousand and twelve, Human Hero. Counselor Barbara Murphy. For her work on breed-specific legislation. Because in two thousand and twelve, we went through a very rough time in Malden. And I really did not feel, along with, um, the mayor, the mayor was also the other human hero. Um, that we did not put in breed-specific, breed-specific legislation into our ordinances. Because we felt that, you know, control of your dogs is, you know, really, you know, something that a, um, a human owner should. Be take care, take care of, and that we did not want to see. Pit bulls, pit bull mixes, or anyone who thought someone was a pit bull being muzzled and walked down the street. So, um. Once again, with everything else, whether, um. You have to take a look at the times and what's happening in the world. But this is something that, um, should have been fixed in two thousand and twelve, not in two thousand and sixteen. I'm sorry, I didn't see, uh, Counsel Kamel, I don't remember him putting that in. But it certainly is something that I am in full support of, uh, this evening, so I would hope to pass this on the floor. Um, and. My, my human hero thing will, like, continue to shine a little bit in my bookcase, so, thank you.
So I'm glad they, they know you're, uh. You're a human and you got an award for it, congratulations.
I'm a human hero, I know. Yay, I know, so.
Human hero, that's good, because if you want a human hero, I'd make sure you have to get your dog leash, I want to remind everybody, it's a new year, you have to get a dog leash for all your pets and animals.
I know, well, you know, funny, I just funny, like, you know, fact, it was, you know, it was an awesome, you know, event over at the Kennedy Center. And, um, I actually had a picture with Loretta Swift that night from, on Mash, so it was really, it was really kind of a great night.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel, Counsel, uh, Carrie McDonald.
Thank you, Council President, um, so I, I, I'm fully in support of that, I just have two questions about this. One is that it looks like the, the, or, the ordinance or the order has a typo in it. It's the, it says section one-O-One of the municipal code, but I think it's actually section. Oh, one oh. And I just didn't know, like, is that something that we have to fix or? You know, Solicitor Fallon, can that just be corrected? Do, do we actually amend it or can that just be fixed when you, when we, you know, enroll it?
We should probably amend it.
I, I thought I looked that up and it was correct, let me just quickly look at the ordinance unless Greg does know.
I'll look it up.
Pull that up.
While you're looking that up, can I ask Clerk Lucy? Um, I learned reading this that apparently you are supposed to have an additional Trapton Dog Park license. In order to use the dog park at Trapton Park in addition to your Malden City Dog License.
Yep, there, there is, there's a fifteen dollar fee that I, from, uh, from what I understand, has never been collected.
So we've never issued, because I've seen dogs in that park, but I don't know that now we've ever issued a Trapton Park Dog License.
There, there is, there is a, uh, it's a fifteen dollar fee, but like I say, I've. I've been here for two and a half years now, I've never seen anyone take it out, nor. My understanding is from the beginning, I'm not so sure anyone's ever paid the fifteen dollars.
Well, if the will is not to add that onto tonight's docket, I, I may have an additional order that I submitted some point about that.
Yep.
I'll talk to Counsel Winslow about that.
So you all set, Counsel McDonald? We'll con, we'll confirm the, uh, the section, Counsel Winslow and then Counsel O'Malley.
Yeah, I, I do have to say, you know, the fears that might have driven this, uh, ordinance to include this language. Um, have not been realized, I mean, I, I frequently go by the dog park and especially during COVID, it's been a, a great place and there's a. You know, friends of Trapton Dog Park Facebook page and, uh, I could say that the dog park has been a great asset to Trapton Park. And, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, it, it seems to be working out very well, so. Uh, not getting complaints about conflicts with dogs, I literally have it right behind my house, so I probably would hear, hear it as well, so. I think this is, uh, you know, a well-needed update and I appreciate Counsel Murphy's, uh, original work on this, thank you.
Hey, Counsel, Counsel O'Malley.
If we discover that this is the, the same section that, uh, Counselor McDonald is referring to. Um, I, I would be willing to second a motion to strike the. Uh, nonexistent Trapton Park Dog License Process. Um, it's probably not best for us to have laws on the books and ordinances on the books that are not being followed by anyone. Um, and probably just help us clean it up.
Okay, so I'll wait to that, Attorney Fallon does have a hand up, so I will, uh, refer to, uh, Attorney Fallon, Attorney Fallon, you have the floor.
Yeah, so that, that, um. Section in the municipal code is now seven point two oh point oh one oh, as Counselor McDonald pointed out. And the section that Counselor O'Malley just referred to is it, is it's section, uh, seven point two oh point oh one oh B. So, so that is where the, um. Provision of, um, a completed application and cost for the license is contained. And I would say you, what you would suggest you do this, and you know, I can also defer to the clerk, but I believe. Counselor McDonald moved to amend and actually Counsel O'Malley also moved to amend, so Counselor. McDonald moved to amend the paper to recite the correct provision and Counselor O'Malley. Moved to amend to eliminate the, um, sec, the provision, section B, with regard to.
Section B.
Application and licensing, seven point two oh point oh one oh B.
Okay, good guess, Counsel McDonald. Uh, so we, I believe we have to suspend docket rules, uh, correct? Did we on the floor, so I will entertain a motion to suspend docket rules.
I'll make the motion to suspend docket rules, but I think that the, the motion that. That, that I made, I think it should, it should just be all one motion made by Counsel, uh, McDonald, because he, he brought that up. If, if it's, if the council is willing.
That's fine, so you're gonna, you're gonna make a motion to suspend docket rules, all right, Counsel?
I, I think the first motion is to amend the motion and then we can suspend docket rules to take it up to.
Okay, okay, fair enough, so we'll make a, a motion to amend. Uh, the, the order to reflect, um, the state. The, the state Master General Law, Chapter One Forty, Section One Fifty-seven, so it's complies with that.
Section oh point, correct in the section.
So, yeah, the first part of the amendment is to, it, it's, it's section point oh one oh. And that's striking what it says, section one-O-One, it's actually section point oh one oh. So that was the first part of Carrie's amendment and that, and then it would be to strike, um. To also strike.
Eliminate zero, zero, one B, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Zero, zero, one.
So it's, uh.
Zero, zero, one, zero, B.
Attorney Fallon.
Those would be the two.
So it's, it's Title VII, Chapter Twenty, Section Zero, Zero, One, right, is that correct?
Greg can correct me, I don't know why it's being referred to that way, but my recommendation is to amend it so that it reads bear. Be it hereby ordained that section seven point two zero point zero one zero. Of the Code of the City of Malden be amended relative to regulation of specific breeds at Trapton Dog Park. To be eliminated in order to comply with Mass General Law's Chapter One Forty, Section One Fifty-seven. With stipulation that no city or town shall regulate dogs in a manner that is specific to breed. And to delete. The language contained in section seven point two zero. Point zero, one, zero.
Zero. B, zero, one, zero, B.
Meaning and intending to eliminate the application and licensing process for use of dog, dog and owner use of Trapton Park.
Thank you, Attorney Fallon. So I believe that's Carrie McDonald's amendment, correct, Counsel McDonald?
That is correct, so moved.
Okay, all right, so we want to make sure, I don't want to, I don't want to screw that up again, but we, everybody understands, so the first. Part of that with the update that Counsel McDonald found is to amend the language, well, actually amend the section, then. Comply with the language and the second part of that is to eliminate, uh, seven twenty, zero, uh, zero, one, zero, section B. Of that application process, everybody understand?
Yes.
Okay, so that's on Counsel McDonald's motion, seconded by, I need a second.
A second.
Is that Counsel Cologne Hayes?
Cologne Hayes, mm-hmm.
Seconded by Counsel Cologne Hayes, clerk will call the word.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Seika, yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Betapora.
Betapora, yes. Motion carries, paper is amended as, uh, suggested. Now, on Counsel O'Malley's motion to suspend docket rules. Clerk, uh, have a second on that?
So I, I think the first.
Counsel rule, counsel rule, he's mean.
Counsel rules, right, then enroll, right?
You, you do have to do seven point oh five two because it didn't carry over, even though it was handled.
Okay. Counsel Winslow, yeah, I probably apologize, go ahead.
I'm sorry for interrupting, I just wanted to.
No, no, so. Okay, so it seems like we have a first reading, which is sort of what we've done is amended, right? And then we enroll and then we ordain, so we can't do all three of those in one night without suspending, so. We still have to enroll and then after enrollment, we would suspend docket rules to ordain. I think that's what the process is, just a point of.
Yep.
Order, I guess that, yeah.
Can, can we, can we roll on the floor though with suspending docket rules?
Yes, we can enroll on the floor without suspending docket rules, it's ordaining and enrolling on the same night.
Okay, I used to know because it was, because this was ordered to go to ordinance, I didn't know if we had to suspend docket rules because the way the paper was advertised, that's why.
This is great training for new counselors here, so.
Yeah. All right, so we don't have to suspend docket rules because it's, that's fine, okay, so, uh, I need a motion to amend. Enroll, excuse me.
Motion to.
So motion to enroll, okay.
So Counsel Winslow's motion to enroll, seconded by Counsel Mo, Murphy, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Seika, yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Betapora.
Betapora, yes, that carries. Now, is it up to the.
Motion to suspend council rules.
Okay, now. Okay, so we, so we got a.
I will defer to Counsel Seminelli.
No, go ahead, go ahead, I'll just second you.
So on Counsel O'Malley's motion to suspend docket rules, seconded by Counsel Seminelli, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Seika, yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Betapora.
Betapora, yes. Council rules are suspended, now I need a motion to ordain.
Motion.
Motion to ordain.
Okay, I'll give it to Counsel Winslow, this is, and then seconded by Counsel Seminelli. So this is on a motion to, to, uh, ordain, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Seika, yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Betapora.
Betapora, yes, paper has been enrolled, ordained, excuse me. Who says government is inefficient? Four votes. Well, good work, that was good work.
I see Attorney Fallon has another point.
Oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Fallon, do you have your hand up again?
I don't want to be a pest.
You're not gonna talk about being, we didn't do it the right way.
But for, for good measure, because your intent was clear on what you wanted to do and it was raised as an issue, you did. You did need to, you did not carry this over, so you have another council rule that applies, so. Could you just vote to. Suspend that rule as well, even though that was what we would, we should have done in the beginning, it's, your rule's seven oh five, seven point oh five.
Because it was on last year.
And you're gonna be handling this as your next item too, so just for good measure. Lest there be any challenge to this, just, if you could just take that vote for your record.
So just to be clear, it's paper seventy-four dash eighteen is what we need to vote to carry over.
I, I wasn't sure. Paper number, but it's.
That's the original paper number was seventy-four eighteen.
But on your docket, counsel, you have it as a two thousand and seventeen paper. Two, two, it's two thousand seventeen twenty-two on the docket.
Well, no, that's paper seventeen of twenty twenty-two.
Oh.
So it was, it was, it came up as a new.
Never mind that, I'm sorry. I'm apologizing.
We rewrote it, so it had, we tried to make the right referrals to the new ordinance, so, so maybe we don't have to do it, it's not.
I'm so sorry, never mind. So never mind. Never mind, it's a new paper.
So we don't need to do that.
This term, they, okay.
This is a new paper.
Perfect, okay, I'm sorry.
And, and for the, the new counselors who are certainly getting their Robert's Rules and Procedural Training today. the, what, what the, what Counselor Winslow and both Attorney Fallon were talking about, which is coming up next, is that papers from the, the previous year carry over and you have to vote to carry them over, if not, they fall off uh, the calendar, you have to reintroduce them through the normal course of putting it on the council docket, refer to the relative committing and then, and then bringing it up again, so that was just a, a good exercise, uh, for the next, uh, um, docket paper, this is, uh, the, 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 the carryovers on rules and ordinance, license, public property, personnel appointments and finance. So just a little bit for certainly the new councils and certainly the public, because it does get confusing. So clerk, next order of business.
Paper eighteen dash twenty-two, order that certain matters be carried forward from the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one biennial session to the current session. Rules and ordinance, paper four oh five dash twenty-one, a paper on site plan review, paper four fifty-two dash twenty-one, paper on obstructions, paper five eighty-two dash twenty-one of small cell ordinance, a paper two eighty-three dash twenty, mass legislation transportation commission, and license paper five seventy-eight dash twenty-one, livery Linda Delacano, paper five seventy-nine dash twenty-one, class two Reganos, paper five eighty dash twenty-one, livery Aqua Group LLC, paper four sixty-four dash twenty, uh, uh, driving school order amendment section, paper five seventy dash twenty-one, license minutes of eleven twenty, paper five thirty dash twenty-one, extended hours, planet fitness. Paper five hundred dash twenty-one, Nix Auto, paper three eleven dash twenty-one, Bonza, Cambridge, Snaps, public property, paper one twenty dash twenty-one, pictorial signs to inform residents not to litter, paper sixty-two dash twenty-one, update on Oak Grove Community Building and personnel appointments, we have paper five fifty-seven dash twenty-one, cannabis commission posting, and in finance, finance, we have paper four sixty-two dash twenty-one, commission on energy efficiency presentation.
Okay, I do need a motion, but before I entertain a motion, it carries over again, I think I explained, hopefully everyone understands, both the council and the community. These are carryo- carryover papers based on, you can see the date there and the paper numbers are twenty-one, the dash twenty-one references the calendar year, and obviously the paper number is the first three digits. Uh, I do wanna thank all the, 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 uh, the, I, I know it wasn't just the chairperson, but, uh, I know there's many members of the ordinance committee, license committee, public property, personnel and finance that met with the clerk in various departments to go through this, uh, usually extensive list, uh, and decided what to bring on and what not to bring on, I did get some calls, so I do wanna thank them for their work. Uh, it doesn't usually get noticed in a meeting like this, they just think we're, you know, I don't wanna say the public just thinks we're doing something on the whim, but there was, there was some, um, uh, strategic and, and certainly debate on carrying these paper forward. So Counsel Simonelli, you have your hand up.
I just motion to carry over.
Okay, any questions on that? Counselor Simonelli's got a motion to carry over, seconded by?
Counselor Murphy.
On Counsel Mur- Murphy's motion to, uh, seconded, on Counsel Murphy, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
Donald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Dika.
Dika, yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Metaphora.
It's metaphor, yes. Papers, that carries, papers carry over, thank you, next order of business.
Uh, docket is clear.
Uh, there is, uh, some table papers.
There's couns- oh yeah, council rules. Motion to take from the table.
Yep, I, I need a motion, yeah, exactly. Uh, Counselor O'Malley, wait, I have a couple hands of Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Dika's hand was up, I didn't see that, so Counsel Dika?
It's fine, I was gonna make a motion to take that off the table.
Okay, Counsel Dika's motion seconded by Counselor O'Malley, if he doesn't mind. I can't hear you, I'm sorry, what happened?
I said I would second Counsel O'Malley.
Okay, so on Counsel O'Malley's motion to take it, uh, uh, take the, to take, uh, the paper off the table, seconded by Counsel Dika, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Linehan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Dika.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Metaphora.
It's metaphor, yes. Paper is, paper five dash twenty-two is off the table. So I wanna discuss the calendar, I know this was, uh, an inquiry made la- two weeks ago about the Jewish holidays, so I did a re- little research. Uh, the first place I went to, I think it was based on Counsel O'Malley's request was, uh, the public schools have the Jewish holidays off, which I remember as well. Uh, the, the, uh, public, modern public school system and Counsel, uh, Clerk Lucy, keep me honest, because I know you were there when I made the inquiries. Uh, the modern public school no longer celebrate the Jewish holidays. Uh, I believe it started first in two thousand nine, uh, and I say that unofficially because they fell on the weekend, and then uh, in two thousand twelve, it was officially taken off the, uh, calendar, so the public schools no longer um, celebrate or, uh, uh, take off that day as a holiday for the modern public school systems. I also did, uh, go to some interfaith, uh, calendars. Uh, I've had a little experience with this in my past life, when we would try to plan events, uh, every time I go to these calendars, it amazes me the amount of uh, cultures and celebrations that are out there, and there are literally, you know, between five and ten every month, depending on your religion, your belief, your culture, uh, and so with that, I would say, I, I, I just, I would not support, uh, changing the, uh, council calendar uh, as presented, uh, two weeks ago at the meeting, I just feel like if we start trying to pick and choose what cultures and which holidays, we will ultimately probably fail, or, or, uh, not have council meetings at one point, so that would be my, my, um, my hope. The second thing I do wanna, uh, mention that came up today, Clerk Lucy did give me an update that the, I believe the, uh, House of Representatives did, uh, pass, but the other, the other open item on the calendar was the primary date, September. Uh, we originally thought it was gonna be the thirteenth, correct, Counsel Lucy?
Yeah, they, the state sets that one, correct, we, we, we get, kinda guessed at it, figuring it was the second Tuesday.
Yeah, so that was reflected, so the thirteenth, they, they have, uh, voted on the sixth, it hasn't gone through the senate, but we suspect that's gonna be that, so I would put the sixth into this, this calendar, uh, and if they do not pass that, we come back and amend that, that, this way we get it on. What that does do though is, that is the Tuesday after, uh, Labor Day, uh, and so it would be a committee meeting, so my suggestion is we have two back-to-back council meetings, which you, which speaking to the clerk is probably not a bad idea, because, uh, especially when you have, uh, a no week meeting, things tend to build up to get, that has to go to, uh, council rather than committee, so I would not wanna change the, the committee nights versus the council nights just for that one entry. So we just have back-to-back council nights, which we've done in the past, uh, and it does, uh, help us with the workload, so that, that's my recommendation. Certainly willing to hear debate, but, um, that's my hope. Counsel O'Malley.
Can you repeat when the, the primary is?
So the primary Counsel O'Malley, this is not official, this is what the clerk told me, so originally we scheduled the thirteenth, it's now September sixth, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. The senate hasn't approved it yet, but we feel, clerk loosely feels, because the house voted, the chances of them not voting the sixth is probably slim and none, so we would just earmark that sixth inside our calendar, correct, Counsel Lucy, is that the, the day, I just wanna make sure I remember it correctly?
That's correct, it looks like once the senate confirmed that the sixth would be primary instead of the thirteenth.
And, and, and then the council committee nights and, and, and council nights would have to, would, would be affected, Counsel O'Malley? I, I just think we should just keep the calendar as it is, and we'll just have back-to-back council nights. Um, obviously we'll have this, we'll have the, the sixth off, but instead of going committee to council, we'll just have two, we'll, we'll bookend that with two council nights, which is, which again, we've done in the past and it does help with the workload.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with that. Um, I, I would still like to keep my motion to, um, designate, you know, October fourth, you know, no council meeting. Uh, and I think kinda what you're talking about, this extra committee or this extra council night probably will help with that.
So what's October fourth? What's the, what's the fourth, what's that, what's that date for?
October fourth, um, I bel- I believe that was Yom Kippur, correct?
Yom Kippur.
Yeah, I mean, only because like, you know, Malden does have a, a very large Jewish community. Um, you know, it's, it's historically, um, been represented, we have Suffolk Square, you know, which was decimated because of urban renewal, um, I, I do think that it is, um, you know, worth it, it I, I, I understand that, that it, this is, could be a slippery slope, but, um, I, I, I don't, I don't think that that is really a risk here, uh, so that's still my motion, i- if it doesn't succeed or it doesn't have a second, that, that's fine.
Okay, discussion of the motion, Counsel Murphy.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at, um, I get two computers going here, so I'm just looking at October twenty twenty-two, and I, I just, I, and I don't know Counsel O'Malley if this is right or wrong, but when I just pulled it up, it's showing Yom Kippur is Wednesday, October fifth. So I'm just kinda
I think when it starts, right?
It starts, it starts at sun, sundown, sunset.
On, on the fourth, because it's showing it, it's showing it here on the fifth, I mean, that's, it's, it's totally blacked out on the fifth.
Yeah, the, the, the days are a little, are, are measured differently, um, so it starts, it starts on the fourth.
Okay.
Counselor, Counsel Murphy, you still have the floor?
No, that was all, I just, it was the only thing I wanted to point out, I was just kinda checking it on this, so if you say it starts on the fourth, I, I believe you, which just as I said, it's the calendar I'm looking at here says the fifth, so that was all.
Okay, Counselor. Hold on, Counsel Winslow, do you have your hand up or might see him, thanks? Counsel Winslow, Counsel Winslow on that
Yeah, I know, um, yeah, I know, the, the calendar I looked at, I mean, it does specifically say that starts at sunset on the the fourth, which is the Jewish tradition, and Yom Kippur is the most, uh, you know, since, you know, most, uh, you know, one, one of the
High holy days.
High holy days of, of the Jewish faith. I mean, for this, you know, it, it's not like, uh, it, this is something would happen every seven years, so, I mean, I had asked a question, you know, that's, it wasn't certain what happened seven years ago, I was on the council, so, um, so that's, I just, it is a high holy day, the highest holy day of the Jewish faith, and, um, you know, it, it is, uh, I know in other circumstances, uh, other, as I've talked to, uh, the Jewish people, I know there's, there's not, uh, you know, this is the highest holy day, and other Jewish holidays, um, it, it would not be, cause I, kind of a something that would con- conflict with, uh, the high holy days, so, so that's, just wanted to say that, so.
So are you second? Counsel
So yeah, I, I think, I think Counsel Linehan had already seconded, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel, was it, you seconded, I, I didn't hear you, I apologize.
I didn't mean to, I, I had a question, I did not actually mean to second it.
Okay.
Oh, I just, I thought it was seconded last time, so I will second it, yeah, I will second it.
Okay, so, so Counsel Simonelli and then Counsel Linehan, if you, you wanna, you have a point of information, you wanna ask a question now, Counsel Linehan?
I would just point at information, are we talking about moving the council or committee night if we were to vote to not hold a meeting that night, or would we just be voting to cancel the council meeting that is scheduled?
Uh, that's a question for Counsel O'Malley.
Okay. Maybe we can come back to that, that's okay.
We are a team, I think we can make the decision together. Um, I, I, we had just said that we are gonna add an additional council meeting, so, uh, if we shift it, uh, so that the, if the primary is on the sixth, the thirteenth could be a council meeting. Yeah, I, I, I think that probably it would be best just to make the following or the, or the, or the coun- the council meeting, the committee meeting before, a full council meeting. Probably the October eleventh would be a council meeting then.
I see what you mean, okay.
So I second that, yeah.
Alright, so second, so Counsel Simonelli now?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I'm in support of, uh, Counsel O'Malley's, uh, motion, I think that, you know, it's important to recognize uh, different ethnic background holidays, especially the high holidays, and me growing up in, uh, Suffolk Square Ward seven, I know that best, so, and then plus, besides, that's the day I get my cool too, so I, I, I think we should, uh, recognize it. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Counsel Murphy, is your hand still up, or is that, uh?
Sorry, my apologies for not lowering it.
No, that's fine, I just wanna make sure, Counsel, okay, any other discussion, so we have a motion. Counsel McDonald.
Uh, I had a, I had a clarifying question, and then a question for the, for the, for Counselor O'Malley. My clarifying question is, do we, so, I didn't, I heard us not adding another council day, but just shifting the, the sixth and the thirteenth around, right, so we'd, so if Counselor, if we, if we decide not to meet on October fourth, we are, we are losing a day of council meetings from the calendar, is that correct?
So, so what, so, I'm, I'm, maybe it's my vocabulary, so the, the committee, there was a committee night, Counsel McDonald, and a, and a council night, right, because as you know, off nights. With the, with the change on the, the, the primary, we would have had back-to-back, uh, we would, we would have had, we would have lost the meeting, so I, I chose to work with the clerk to say the meeting before the, the, the primary was, we, we were still gonna meet, was gonna, is gonna be a council meeting, and then, then we're gonna have, then we're gonna have the day off, and then coming back, we're gonna have another council meeting, not a committee meeting, so we are still losing the primary, and this day, the October, the fourth, the October fourth, we would be losing a council, whether it be committee night or council night, we, we are losing that. We're not making anything up, because remember, we're losing primary day, the primary day too, so it's two meetings, two meetings, whether it be committee or council, that we're losing.
Right, but in the schedule that you sent, it had already blocked out September thirteenth as primary election, and then had September sixth as council meeting, so we were saying flip those two, right, okay.
Well, well, yes, we gotta, yeah, reverse, correct, because they go Tuesdays, correct.
So there's no, so just to clarify, the, the invitation to, the motion to re- to not meet on the fourth would remove a, would remove a meeting from this, from this number of meetings that was in the schedule that you posted.
Correct, yep, it would remove a meeting, yep, and when I say meeting, committee meeting, council meeting, we're not meeting at all, period.
Right.
I just wanna be clear, because I know council meetings and committee meetings are a little distinct, so.
And just to clarify my motion, so you, that is correct, we would have no meeting on October fourth, but it would also change October eleventh to a full council meeting in order to make up for that.
Okay, so we'd lose a committee meeting, we'd lose a night of committee meetings.
But you can still have committee meetings on council nights.
Okay. So, it just, I, I don't know how, I don't know what the proper format to ask this, but like, of, is it possible, do, is it realistic to think we can make those committee meetings up at another time, or just kind of go for a marathon meeting on the, on the eleventh? Like, is that the, is that the thinking? Or do we expect to lose time for committee meetings, or is a little bit of both?
If I could
My experience
Go to the chair, if I could do the chair, you know, committee meetings can happen really any day of the week. Um, I, in my experience, don't think that this is gonna cause any scheduling conflicts. Um, you know, it might, it might be that there is a committee meeting on a Wednesday prior or, uh, after, uh, but I, I don't think that something like this would cause a, a huge scheduling conflict.
Alright, so let's call Counsel McDonald's, uh, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, my final question was, is the, so, I asked this in the last meeting, could we move the time of the meeting to be done by the time that Yom Kippur starts, and, and I believe the answer was that we can't do that, because it's in rules or, or
Correct. Correct. Correct.
Yep.
Because we can't start before five thirty, is that correct?
Correct, correct. Yeah, yeah, and, and, and from, from the chair, you know, I, I certainly understand this, I just, I think the concern I have as a counselor is if another religion or culture has a very high holiday, we can't say no, it's, it's, we're creating a little bit of a, I know it only happens every seven years, but, but this, I mean, the amount of time we spend on the calendar, certainly, it, it does have an impact, because if another culture, like I said, a high holiday comes in, and it's on a Tuesday, I, I, I think it's gonna create a little bit of, a little bit of havoc, so that, that's, it's not an easy decision, and I think if the schools, which this, this culture, you know, my, my, my mother grew up in Suffolk Square, I'm very familiar with Suffolk Square and the history there, and I lived in the temple, and uh, so I, I certainly understand the, the, the sensitivity to that date, but, um, you know, I just, again, my concern is certainly just if, if another culture has a high holiday, and it's a Tuesday, we would have to honor it, and then it could be a little bit of challenging for the council workload, that's my only, and that's why I think the schools ultimately get rid of it, they used to celebrate both, Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, both, so. Counsel Cologne Hayes.
Uh, thank you, Council President, um, I think the schools, from what I remember, um, actually did away with a lot of the, uh, holidays and gave days that you could take, just for this reason, they would say, like, if, if you were Jew, there was like a few floating holidays, almost like, if you wanna call it that way, because there are so many, um, and then you
They would say like, if if you were Jew, there was like a few floating holidays, almost like, if you want to call it that way, because there are so many, um and then you would um opt to to hold your child home, um but uh, yeah, um I'm listening to all this too, a little confused on the dates, but I think I think I've got it. On um, we're not going to lose a day or a committee, because we can hold, um we can hold the committee day on something other than um the Tuesday council night.
Uh that's up to the, yeah, that 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 is, counsel O'Malley is right, you can have a committee meeting, it's gonna be posted with the same parameters, that could happen anytime, but uh that's up to the the chairs, if they want to make that data. All right, let me say counselors, counsel, I'm sorry, counsel, uh Karen Cullen Hayes, are you all set?
I'm all set, thank you.
Yep, no problem, counselor, Seika.
Thank you, council president, I also agree with you, counsel metaphor, I think if we do for one, we should be doing for them all. Um the schools years ago did remove all holidays, including Good Friday, that was always taken off, so they now go to school for a half a day on Good Friday, and they got um they had off Jewish holidays, yes, and then those got taken away, so I I think we as a city council should not be taking off holidays, my personal opinion. Um I think that we should be following the calendar that you have, minus the the one slight adjustment from this, the thirteenth, and just switch it out, I think we are gonna create a slippery slope if we do uh take off the Jewish holiday, because who's to say one holiday is more important than another? I could think a holiday is just as important as Yom Kippur, vice versa, so I I think that we need to continue, um I've been on the city council for eight years, and I don't think we've ever taken off a Jewish holiday. So if something like this only happens every seven years, then it already happened, and I've never seen us debate a council calendar, the way we've been debating this council calendar, so I would like to make a motion to move the, to to move the calendar and approve it as as it's stated, minus the the change next to the thirteenth, December.
Hey, do you have a second on counsel Seeker's motion? On counsel Condon's second, okay, so we have two motions, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, let's take up the first motion by counsel O'Malley, second, I believe, by counselor Winslow. Clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, no.
Condon.
No.
Crowe.
No.
Linnahan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
No.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Seika, no.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Metaphora.
Metaphora, no.
Hales, five to six.
On counsel Seeker's motion, seconded by counsel Condon, clerk will call the roll. And this is to accept the calendar, this will be real clear, this is accept the calendar as presented, other than reversing the uh committee meetings to both being, uh council meetings being committee meeting, and and then also, we're go, we're, just to be clear of this council we we believe, based on the clerk's input, that it's gonna be the thirteenth, and that we're just waiting for the Senate vote. If it needs to change to thirteen, which I don't think it will change, excuse me, the thirteenth to the sixth, we'll have to come back and just amend it. But I, if there is gonna be a change, that's what it's gonna be, so just wanted to let everybody know that. We're at the mercy, we're at the mercy of the 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 Senate right now to determine what date that primary falls on, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Cologne Hayes, yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linnahan.
Linnahan, yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
No.
Seika.
Seika, yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Metaphora.
Metaphora, yes. Thank you, and I would just remind the counselors, certainly any holiday the council wants to celebrate, uh you know, we don't have attendance here, you can take off that, or if there's any special um any special scheduling you need, certainly, we would understand, I think certainly public would do, I think it's any, just like, uh you know, I think any private sector job, or certainly anything in the schools, feel free to celebrate what you what you care to celebrate, when you want to celebrate, Tuesday, Wednesdays. Um and and I appreciate the debate, it it certainly wasn't an easy decision. Uh I put a lot of thought into it, I looked, I did a lot of research, and it just was uh again, I I I keep explaining it, because I was amazed by the amount, and you know, maybe this is my naivety, but the amount of uh other holidays and religions that celebrate certain days of the year, and and I don't know uh being in that culture, that religion, what is important and what's not important, and and I I I can just foresee us um being inconsiderate to one culture or one uh religion holiday over others, and that's why I just felt like accepting the uh past um calendars. Next order of business.
Other documents, clear.
Okay, so the document is clear, I will entertain personal privilege, I will start with, there's no hands up. Counsel Seeker's first, counsel Seeker. Wait, I got personal privilege, counsel Condon.
Personal privilege, yes, personal privilege, sorry. So really fast, I just wanted to, um this Saturday is Bobby Knox's birthday, and he his birthday wish is going to come true, and we could be seeing with up of thirty inches of snow, from what I'm reading. I followed, yeah, I followed this Cape and weather um on Facebook, and the guy is has been pretty accurate with all the, you know, past storms, and this storm is looking like a blizzard with multiple hours of sixty mile an hour wind up tip, we could have a potential of up to close to three feet of snow, it seems like, so um high tides are gonna be a problem, and even if we don't get the snow that they're saying, they're saying that the wind and the high tide is still gonna be damaging, so I just want to make sure everybody, you know, has been paying attention and gets out and gets what they need, and make sure they have all their, you know, laptops and cell phones charged, because it sounds like this could be a a real doozy of a storm this weekend, and hopefully Bobby will be able to sleep in a little, but I highly doubt it or enjoy his birthday, so I just want to wish again Bobby Knox a happy birthday this weekend, and hopefully he'll be able to take off the following weekend for his birthday, so thank you.
Now, I'm gonna just go down the order I saw them, I believe counsel Winslow was next, and counsel Linnahan, and counsel Karen McDonald, counsel Winslow.
So um yeah, well, that sounds like quite a storm, counsel Seeker, um I just wanted to, uh Saturday night to if the power's still out, up, um Chinese Culture Connection is having their uh lunar uh New Year celebration, which is often their annual fundraiser and that type of thing, a great event, so uh go to Chinese Culture Connection and um uh take advantage of that opportunity for staying at home, thank you.
Hey, counsel, I believe it's the year of the tiger, is that correct? Am I right?
Yeah, I guess you have that ahead of me.
I think it's the year of the tiger.
Yeah, I guess it comes in with a tiger, I guess, this year.
Yes, yes.
Tiger of a store.
Counsel, thank you, counsel Winslow, counsel Linnahan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I was gonna actually say the same thing, invite folks to hopefully join me with the powers still on, um thank you, J Dean, for that awesome news, that was um really depressing. But I'm gonna be on Zoom, hopefully with the Chinese Culture Connection as well Saturday night, so encourage anybody to join in. And also, um if folks didn't have a chance to take the survey on the future of the um Malden Courthouse, which is um is closed and is being turned over to the city to hopefully become an arts and culture center. Um there's still a chance to take that survey online, if you missed that, um you can also just email me your thoughts. I'm just wanting to give one more plug for that before we close it, hoping to get a really broad cross section of the community to send us their ideas, that's all.
Linnahan, can you tell us where the survey, just remind the audience where the survey is located?
It should be on the City of Malden website, um I also have it on my council Facebook page, so you can find it both of those places.
Thank you, counsel Linnahan, I appreciate that. Counselor Karen McDonald.
Uh thanks, also, we will, um just wanted to say congratulations to Greater Malden Asian American Community Coalition for Great Banquet. Um they had this set up with District Kitchen, where if you buy your ticket, you can pick up dumplings and and wine, it was just, it was really beautiful. So I just want to say that was, that was a nice event that they did, congratulations to the awardees. Um and to also, I wanted to recognize just how much conversation there was about this vocational school vote that happened today, I did support it, I know many people did, but there were a lot of questions about it, and I uh I want to note in particular that our our clerk's office, clerk Lucy and and Carol Ann De Zidiero had to do a lot of work to pull off a special election while all of our precincts were being reimagined and redone, and so just appreciation to the clerk's office for for an unexpected special election, uh and I want to commit to the residents that I do think that this vote has revealed some underlying undemocratic process, it related to the way that we approve these things, and the and the and inequities in the way that we are asked to pay for them across the communities that are participating in the vocational high school, so I'm glad that the high school will hopefully get built now, uh and I want to commit uh and hope this council will will help also, just looking for um ways to help improve that process uh and as as we also look, I know, for other ways to 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 lessen the local impact. Thank you.
Hey, counsel, counsel Karen Cullen Hayes.
Hi, thank you, um also, uh wanted to uh plug the Chinese Culture Connection, that's having the event on Saturday, and um the, also to let everybody know that I've been, um I'm working on a community advisory board, actually with counsel Crowe, uh Crowe was on here um today, and wanted to let people know, um this is like a Bible for me, um I keep it on my desk all the time, it's the well-being report of Malden. Um and so we're working on that again, um it hasn't been um updated since twenty fifteen. It's super important, especially if you're writing grants, but just to have all of our health and well-being um um information in one place. And and for the first time, um we're combining with Everett and Malden. Um so uh I will update you as we go along, there will be public meetings, and um I just wanted to let you know that that should be coming around soon.
Thank you, counselor Hayes, uh counsel O'Malley.
Um I just want to um let everyone know that next Tuesday, uh February first is the start of Black History Month. And I think the conversation that we had earlier, uh it's really important that the hard work that we're gonna be doing as a council and as a community. Uh so I think it is very appropriate that the the counsel Seminelli's committee um will be meeting next Tuesday to kind of kickstart that process um in a intentional manner, in an intentional way. Um congratulations to the Northeast Voke, it's gonna be, I think, a a great campus. Um ideally, I hope that there's a way that we can save as much uh open space on that campus as possible, it is really a a gem. Um I do think this school is going to be world-class, and uh to counselor McDonald's uh statement, making sure that it is more equitable uh and that Malden residents and our students have every opportunity to go there and get trained, and ideally um closing the burden in terms of transportation, in terms of how to get there. A great day for for our residents, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, any other counselors? Okay, seeing none and hearing none, I do want to just give um uh certainly celebrate Chinese uh New Year, it's a very important year for them, it's the year of the tiger, like I said. Uh my kids are very, uh they love uh guessing every year the the symbol, uh so we were certainly participating uh this year as well. Uh I do want to just give, I know a couple of the councils, especially the ones who live in the West End, just a reminder out there, this is my plug. Um with the weather pattern, even though we've had a lot of cold days, I just remind everybody, uh especially kids and maybe some parents, uh if you're letting your children out there and they get the ponds, just make sure they're they're safe and stable, we've had some warm days there, and uh I took a walk with my dog uh through the fell's uh pond a couple times last weekend. Uh literally, one day it was frozen, you could walk across, and the next day it was melting, and then it got refro, so that creates cracks in the adult. My public safety announcement, just be careful, the last we want to see is, you know, the family or our children enjoying themselves, and it's it's great, there's nothing like pond hockey, but um just just a a public awareness there, so I I wanted to put that out there, and then I I think everybody else said it, you know, uh college is not for everybody, and certainly trades are a valuable resource, uh it's a great paying job. Uh I have a lot of friends in the trades, and sometimes I'm jealous, they get to use their hands every day, and they get to make as much money as they want, and they work hard for that. Uh but more importantly, I think uh myself and counsel McDonald have had this conversation uh with the infrastructure bill and a lot of money going towards this, there's gonna be a need for talented individuals uh of all uh genders, race, creed, everything, and we just don't have enough men and women or or anybody joining the trades, and so this is a great opportunity to certainly leverage uh a career in that field, uh and more more now than ever, right, more now than ever, and uh I'm glad it, I I'm glad it passed. Uh but the other side is, just as a council, and I think I consider myself a fiduciary we, and counsel McDonald said, and counsel O'Malley, we have to pay for it now, so now we, the the burden is on our side. I have the ability to uh participate with the mayor, uh as the council president on a on his weekly delegation, and he was adamant that we need the state to come in and help us with additional resources here, because it is a big spend. Um you know, and the concern is, that building right now is pegged, I think, at three hundred and twenty-one million dollars. Everybody's watching inflation numbers, that could go up ten to fifteen percent like that. Um so while it is certainly great news, this is certainly an impactful, and I think it's it's gonna start that conversation, which I put some councils on for the long-term strategy, financial planning, where this is a number now, we have to think about carrying forward along with our other well wishes uh for all our students, so I'm certainly happy, excited. Uh they deserve a world-class institution, but certainly understand that we need to look at at the revenues now, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
On counsel O'Malley's motion to adjourn, seconded by counsel Seminelli, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linnahan.
Linnahan, yes.
McDonald.
McDonald, yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seika.
Seika, yes.
Seminelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Metaphora.
Metaphora, yes, council meeting is adjourned, stay safe, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night, thank you.
Get ready for the snow.